Good morning. This is the City of Shelbyville Mayor and City Council Special Call Meeting. It's 10 o'clock on May 23rd, 2025. We are in the Council Chambers Building, Code and Planning, here at North Canada Boulevard. The first thing on our agenda today is citizen comments. Do we have any?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. The next item would be a call to order, and I am calling this meeting to order at this time. And I will also ask second for a roll call of our city council members.
Councilmember Bellhaus?
Here.
Councilmember Ewing?
Here.
Councilmember Noel?
Here.
Councilmember Christie?
Here.
Councilmember Blevins?
Here.
Councilmember Turnbull?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you do have a quorum. All members are present.
Thank you. All right, the next item is the adoption of our agenda. Doesn't look like we have any amendments, thank goodness. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Some.
Do we have a second?
I'll say that.
Okay, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The next item is consideration of a motion to allow the city attorney to read captions only on ordinance system. And that Ginger's not here with us right now. She's in a meeting.
I guess I'll read it, yes, sir. If you want to get a motion, allow me to do it.
Okay, I need a motion to allow our city reporter to read in lieu of our city attorney.
I make the motion.
Second? Okay, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Good, thank you. All right, Lisa, if you would, ordinances, first readings.
Okay, an ordinance of the City of Shelbyville, Tennessee, adopting the annual budget and tax rate for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2026.
Okay, do I have a motion to adopt that annual budget and tax rate? Tax rate's going to remain the same? No increase? Got a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Sorry.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second. Let's have a roll call vote.
Any discussion? Any discussion?
Yeah, does any discussion on that before we go for?
Just gonna say, this is essentially the first reading, and the arguments that have been provided will be populated based on what the input from the city council.
Yes, thank you, Scott. Okay, no discussion. Let's go to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Bellhaus?
Yes.
Councilmember Ewing?
Yes.
Councilmember Noel?
Yes.
Councilmember Christie?
Yes.
Councilmember Blevins?
Yes.
Councilmember Turnbull?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
All right, attorney's with us now, and Ginger, if you'd like to, if you're ready for V., you can read that, or Lisa, you go ahead and read that.
An ordinance to make final amendments to the adopted budget ordinance as amended of the City of Shelbyville, Tennessee, various funds for the fiscal year 2024-2025, the period ending June 30th, 2025.
Okay, do I have a motion to adopt that budget order?
Some.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, do we have any discussion on that? All right, let's have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Christie?
Yes.
Councilmember Blevins?
Yes.
Councilmember Turnbull?
Yes.
Councilmember Bellhaus?
Yes.
Councilmember Ewing?
Yes.
Councilmember Noel?
Yes.
Okay, all right. It said read captions only on ordinance system resolutions. I'll take one. Resolution to authorize appropriations for nonprofit organizations for fiscal year 2025-2026. I think there's three of them that we are, it's mandatory for us to pay for those nonprofits, or to give a donation to those nonprofits.
I make the last one.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, any discussion on that?
Are we voting to accept those new numbers and the $10,000 now, or does that come later?
This is just the standard, the ones that were last year's numbers. We filled those in with the resolution. Normally, resolutions only require one reading, so normally you would be passing that, but because we pass that along with the budget, we usually do two readings. So this will be the first reading, and then it'll come back to you at the last budget hearing. If there's any adjustments, it will be amended to reflect any adjustments y'all made during your talks, so.
Those three nonprofits, just to let you know, Community Tennessee Rehabilitation Center, $25,000. Shelbyville Bedford County Public Library, $164,812. Senior Citizen Center, $20,000.
And those are the same amounts we gave them this year.
That's exactly right. That's exactly.
If y'all want to raise them at the next reading, you can, but that's, we just put in the same numbers.
Okay, all right, do I, have already got a motion and a second?
I have my motion and a second.
All right, any other discussion on that before we take a roll call vote? All right, let's have a roll call vote, Lisa.
Councilmember Ewing?
Yes.
Councilmember Noel?
Yes.
Councilmember Christie?
Yes.
Councilmember Blevins?
Yes.
Councilmember Turnbull?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowden?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any announcements to make before we close this meeting?
Just that we will have lunch for everyone around 12, so we'll take a break around there to eat lunch.
Okay, and if we get into a situation where others need breaks, kind of let us know. We handled the meeting today. If you need to speak, if we can work it out, just kind of raise your hand or something so that we can call on you. If there's no other announcements, I'll need a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I stand adjourned.
All right, do a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, this meeting is adjourned. Next meeting will start at 10:15. That's what we've got on our schedule. Good morning again. This is the City of Shelbyville Mayor and City Council Budget Review Work Session. It's May 23rd, it's about 10:15 a.m. with City Council Chambers at 100 North Canada Boulevard. At this time, I'll call this meeting to order, and we have a list of the agenda and things that we're going to cover today, but I have, our Vice Mayor would like to speak, and he had asked for an opportunity at this time.
Thank you.
Christian?
I've had concerns about our budget over the last couple years, the declines. So I took it on myself to call M-TAS yesterday. I talked to two finance consultants. One of them is Brad Harris, and the other one is Tanya Travis, who is our president, presently over us. She actually has, can pull up our financials, which I was surprised, but I was told that good practice is to present a balanced operating budget that does not include using reserves. I was also told by both of them in their experience at city level, one of them was a city manager, the other one was a financial person at different cities, that their city manager never presented a budget that was not balanced without using reserves. Ms. Travis also pulled our financials, and she said that I have a legitimate concern the way the balance is going down each year, so in such large increments. Ms. Travis also said that, and I'm pretty sure I'm right, because I asked this twice, that M-TAS actually recommends a six-month operating expense to be held in reserve. That's, it's not state law. Now, state law says you can use a, you can, you can do it and use a budget. Also, with concerns I've, and I know y'all hate, I thought my brother's was a city manager 25 years, and he said that he never presented a budget using reserves, and he said, I covered myself to make sure that I insisted that the council be the ones to vote to go into reserves. He said, because you're kicking the can down the road, and if you look at what we've done the last few years, we've gone from 23 million to 16 million, and now we're asking for 8 million. And we are actually just, you know, it looks to me like we're on a road to disaster. So I said last year, when we did this and lowered the, use of reserve last year, that I was not going to vote for a budget that used our reserves this year, which put us back to $16 million. And if that's true, if I heard her right, about six months is a recommendation, not required. Now, the law is a different deal, just like it's required, you don't, you can use the reserves, you can, so go in and use it. But they also told me it's not good practice. So I stated last year that I was not going to vote for a budget if we went into our reserve. So I just want the council to be aware of that, and what I found out yesterday. So, thank you.
Thank you, Will. Any comments from anyone else? Balanced budget is always a good, good thing. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for your comments. You've brought two very good things. I mean, Brad and Tanya are both outstanding in their field. I had a pleasure working with Tanya. It was terrible to hear.
Thank you.
Yes, and she was also a good financier. However, when we talk about our money, as they set aside, wouldn't he think to prevent them? The federal government sent us $6.7 million, and they said, "He'll improve your city." So this mayor and city council wanted to set that aside for the flood pumps, of course. But that $6.7 million has been set in our general fund, which in my view, gave us a false sense of what this big reserve we had. So I just wanted to make that comment before we get in it, and again, I respect and appreciate the Vice Mayor's comments, and that is our goal, is to get into a balanced budget every year. But because of the $6.7 and other big projects, it's very challenging this year.
Yes, sir.
I might echo what Scott, our city manager, was saying about the $6.7 million. As we know, several million of that is for the flood pump. So the majority of that $6 million is going with that. Also, because we had such a controversy three years ago in an election, and we lowered taxes, that also would contribute towards us having to spend more out of our deficits, out of our fund balances. So as I stated before, I voted against it. I will continue to vote against lowering the property taxes unless we see revenues from this lawsuit due fruition. I don't want to be spending ahead of the budget for something that we might win two, three years down the road. So in the meantime, yes, I think the majority of our deficit, our fund balance spending this year is from the COVID funds and relief funds that we'll see in the actual spending this year is from the COVID funds and relief funds that we'll see in the actual spending going forward. Without those special funds that are being extended on the pumps, we'll be closer to the $2 million number, which should be a manageable number. Because we, in the past, we generally rejected revenues much lower, expenses higher, and we wound up in a $2 million, a $2.5 million fund balance at the end of the year, as I think we'll hear reported in a minute about the current year one. So that's the only comment.
Anyone else have anything, Scott?
Just a question for Peter Scott. Of that 6.7 ARP, I couldn't follow it all the way through a couple of years' budget. How much of that ARP funds is left in our fund balance? Do you have a number?
I think we've only spent $274,500 up toward the flood pumps themselves. Now, we've paid Grigs and Maloney, I'm just going to estimate 50 to 75,000 if they're, if that's exactly, I can look over here. But we also used some of that, that 6.5, well, with interest, it was 6.7, but we also used some of that for the North Britton Street, so that was like a million dollars for that. So if, you know, Will budgeted about 900,000 as a contingency when he estimated what the flood pumps would cost, which was like six, six, seven million. If we don't have to use that contingency, I think we've got plenty to cover the flood pump installation. We have not bid the installation yet. So in my mind, that could go a million either way. So if it goes our way, I think we'll have some of that ARP money left to spend on other things. If it doesn't, then we'll, you know, that's a different story. But I don't think it's going to be bid until September, October, I don't know when. So that's one of the unknowns, how much the installation is going to cost. And that's the biggest part of the flood pump project.
And if we have leftover ARP, is it restricted? It can only be used on certain things, or is it in our general fund that we can spend it on whatever?
We can spend it on any whatever, because technically, based on the comptroller's recommendation, we spent our ARP funds two years ago on operating expenses. So what you're seeing now in fund balance are just general funds. But in our mind, we know it's bigger because of the ARP influx. That was rambling answer.
Let me speak about that, that tax decrease that's come up. The taxes were increased in the City of Shelbyville, even the four-year term before my term, to the dollar fifty-nine, when new folks came in, in our election that took place in 2022. We saw a need to reduce property taxes to decrease the burden on property owners in Shelbyville. So we decreased that by 11 cents. That decrease was somewhere around $600,000. We looked at, and I went over with Kay before I got elected, all the different things that were revenue was coming in. Sales taxes were up. There was no need to take any of that money out of fund balance for that tax decrease. It was covered by those sales taxes. I wanted to make that statement. Anyone else? All right. A is a brief overview of the proposed budget notebook, layout, and general notes. And Kay and Scott, our general city manager, and Kay Parker, our treasurer, we're going to hand this meeting over to you at this moment.
Well, I'll just mention all the notes. It's kind of similar to what we had in the front of the notebook last year. It just kind of says what's in the budget in the different sections. I will point out that y'all already kind of mentioned this, but the 8.7 million, the usage of fund balance, about 4 million of that is being sent to capital projects, 500,000 to State Street Aid for paving, and 100,000 as our match on the Harts Chapel sewer pumping. So these are actual, I understand, I'm for a balanced budget, but I think the balanced budget that they reference is operating. I could be wrong, somebody's going to be mad, but operating would be revenues coming in, your normal operating going out. That's the balanced part. What the city has done since I've been back, and I'm sure they were doing it before, is that we just continued, as you see capital needs, you dip into fund balance if you have excess there to buy. We bought airport property for 3.5 million cash. We bought two new fire trucks for cash. We bought garbage trucks for cash, and those type things. So I'm not sure how everybody classifies it, but I think when the council chooses to transfer money to capital projects, I don't know that that's considered operating. That's kind of more of a capital thing. But anyway, about 4.6 million of that is, is going to the capital fund. The other 4 million is, in fact, what William's talking about, operating, revenues on the books, the 4 million less than expenditures. What Henry alluded to, a lot of, some of that is attributable, attributable to conservative budgeting. Typically, I try to underestimate revenues and overestimate expenditures, but be reasonable. Typically, the revenues will come in at 105% of what you budget at least, and, and no department spends 100% of what they budget, because I start getting nervous when we even get close, because you never want to go over. So that's the gap Henry was talking about, where in a, in a typical year, which you never know if it's going to be typical, it's because the COVID year wasn't typical. You don't know what the economy is going to do. But if you had a typical average year, that gap will close. So on the 4 million side, it may end up just being 2 million. Now, I completely understand if you don't want it to be 2 million, that's reasonable, but I don't think we'll end it 4 million on the operating side. That's just an estimate. I highlighted in yellow there a fund balance policy that was approved by the council, I don't know what year, but they are recommending a 20% requirement for the fund balance in the general fund. If you calculate it out based on what's here right now, and that's another thing, this is just a starting point. You have to put some kind of numbers in to know where you are, and then you can change anything. But until you put numbers in, you have no idea where you stand. But this current book, as it, as it is, is at 24%, so we exceed the minimum. And y'all want, may want to be more than the minimum, and I'll just put in whatever y'all tell me to. The current budget also has the dollar forty-eight, as Scott mentioned. I got the assessment numbers and all from Rhonda around May 5th or so. The same tax rate is projected to bring in only 105,000 more this year than last year. So it's not a huge influx. Sometimes it's more than that, but that's all it was. So about the same revenue on the property tax side. And I budgeted a 5% delinquency. Probably won't be that much, because people pay their property tax, but that's just another way to conservatively budget for that. And I'm talking too long here, but the next couple of pages just talks about, you know, what's listed in what tab section. Let's see. Okay, so that's just kind of, so if I have any questions on the note section?
I have a question. I think the biggest question is on page four. When you're looking at that fund balance, that's the proposed budget, you look across from the actual 23, 24, and the estimated ending amount there, how much decrease from 23 million dollars down to almost 17 million. So you have in the proposed budget, 8 million, but if you look at the decrease in that fund balance, general fund, almost 8.7 million dollars. I think that's maybe the question where Vice Mayor Christie is, is speaking of. Where did that difference come from, and why have we got that 8 million dollar drop?
Well, that kind of refers back to, back in the note section, the four-point, about, if you look on page three, I guess, we're in the next, the next to last column, right? You come down to the bottom, you say that 4.6 million for total transfers out. 4.6 million of that is what I was talking about transferring to capital projects, you know, State Street Aid for paving. So about 4.6 million of that aid you're talking about is money that's going to other funds to fund capital projects. The other 4 million is, is the 24 million estimated revenues and the 28 million. It's above it there, in yellow and blue, 28 million of expenses. That's where the other four of the 8 million comes from. I went back through the revenues, and I could easily raise them by 500,000, probably could do it a million. I just, I just conservatively put that number in there. Now, I don't want to artificially inflate it and say, "Oh, we're balanced. I raised it to 28 billion." You know, you can't do that either. But you, I can reasonably increase revenues at least half a million. On the expense side, it kind of shows you there the different departments and how much each department is increasing. Some of that is due to, you know, the fire department hired three additional firemen, y'all approved that. The health insurance is going up 5%, and, you know, on the entire city, that's a hit. And the police department, I don't think they hired any additional personnel this year, but they have in the past. The, you know, the airport show's going up 95,800, but that's mainly between health insurance, but also fuel sales. And of course, if you sell more fuel, it's coming in revenues more, too. So that can be a little bit deceiving, because, you know, you raise your revenues, too. So that's my long answer to that. It's about half and half, 4 million for capital, 4 million for the operating side. And we can change these to whatever the council wants.
Okay. Yeah, I saw where some of those increases, and I understood what, why those increases took place. Out of 6.7 ARC funds, and I think when I first was elected, we decided to take that out. He was kind of sitting in a bond. We had to get it out, as I remember. And we have only taken the 970,000 down at the North Britton Street project out of that. Is that the only thing that's been taken out of those funds?
Okay, so we paid, we had to pay 15% down on the 1,830,000 flood pumps. So we wrote a check for 274,500 as my recollection. And then Griggs and Maloney, we've paid them some of their fees, because, you know, they had to. But when we get the flood pumps, obviously, we'll pay the remaining of that, and then we've got to do the bid to see if the installation is going to be 3 million, or 4 million, or 5 million, or hopefully it'll be a low number, but.
We had like 3.2 million, I think, set aside for that, wasn't it?
Well, that's how much we moved last year, because that's how much I thought we would spend, but we didn't spend hardly anything, because we haven't gotten that far along.
Does that answer the question from William about the difference in the 8 million dollars and things like that? Anybody else have any questions about that? Does it?
It does, but if you back up to the summary of funds, look at the front line, no matter how you slice it, we've gone from 23 million to 16 million to 8 million, we're proposing in three years.
You're correct.
And that's, and that's still, wherever it comes from, or wherever it is, you're still hitting 8 million dollars a year more than you're bringing in. So somewhere down the line, I mean, if I own my home, and I've got X number of dollars to spend on it, and I pull from my savings for a few years, once that savings runs out, I lose my home. What happens to the city? We either have to cut, I mean, when you get down much below this, and if MTS, if I heard her correct and said she preferred six months, that's more like 14 million. But we still, somewhere down the line, we're going to have to, you can't spend more than you bring, I mean, if you bring in 27 million, and you spend 30 something million, eventually, you run out of money. I mean, and are we going to be the ones that address this, or we're going to kick this down the road and let the next council take care of it when we run out? And there's only two ways, two or three things to do. You either cut, you increase taxes, which nobody wants to do, or you cut services or employees, which is nobody wants to do either. So what are you doing? You're in this, this thing is just plain simple. If my expenses to operate my house is 25 million, $25,000, and I don't have it $20,000, you have to address your shortage somehow. And unless I'm reading this wrong, maybe I'm looking at the way the city budget and finances and this money works different than my own personal resources.
What you're saying is correct. That are, that is the numbers, Scott.
Well, if I may make a comment.
Yes, sir.
Go out and wait for just a moment. This has been a tremendously challenging budget to work. And our department fans, everybody working with Kay and every staff come together in a moment of reflection. This is the 35th budget that I've been involved in throughout my life. And this is now moved up to the number two, the most difficult one I've ever had to do. And, but I choose to look at it, maybe I'm wrong. You all know me, I wear my big orange colored glasses a lot. But last year, Vice Mayor and others, we said, "Okay, we're going to generate 24 million in refunds." But because of good budgeting practices and excellent work by our leaders and directors, we got 26.5 million that's going to come in. So the number is not nearly as bad as it looks, but I couldn't agree more with Vice Mayor. There are three options on a budget. You either raise revenues, you cut services, or you do a combination of both. So that's what we're here today for, is to get direction from you all, because if we want to reduce patrols, what, cut paving, cut personnel, whatever needs to be done, we'll bite the bullet and do it. But this is your honest call. We, we have put together, working diligently with our department leaders, to come up with the best plan based on a lot of experience that's right here across the room. So now, we've put it in your hands, and please point us in the direction we need to go.
So we go, are we going to go tab, a tab over this budget? Because there's stuff in here that makes fat, fat, period. But we're going to go.
I thought we were going through the budget, but we'll do whatever y'all want to, just through the budget, but.
So to get back to this fund balance, do the money that we have in the ARC fund, is that a part of that 8, 8,75,098? Is that all included in that?
It's all rolled up in these numbers.
That's what I thought. So what happened from the 16 million to the 8 million that we dropped 8 million dollars in the last year?
The 6 million to that.
That's a estimated ending 24, 25.
To the 25, 26.
Okay.
Okay, that's.
And then you look at actual 23, 24. That's page four. I'm just looking at those top lines up there, just trying to make sense for all the council members, why it dropped from 23 million to 16 million to 8 million.
Well, last year, we moved 5.2 million to capital projects.
Moved it to where?
To capital projects to cover things we've bought.
Things if you had percentages off of and such things.
Now, we ended the year with 3 million, because the projects didn't progress very fast. But we also moved 750, this is on page three, if you look in that column at the bottom. We also moved an extra 750 to state road projects, because we're kind of building up money in that fund for the upcoming Fairfield Pike and River Overlook. So we're, we're projecting at the end of this year to have a million and a half sitting in fund balance in state road projects. We also sent.
I saw, I saw that on page three, Kay. I don't mean to interrupt you, but that 4.6 million, I said that total transfers out, and I saw that in the capital projects and everything. That still leaves us with a difference of about three or four million dollars. That, where did that, where did that go?
Well, that's the operating that increased from hiring more people and just.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. It came, came out because we didn't have a balanced budget last year, right? In other words, the revenue coming in versus the expenses going out does not mean equal.
Well, we don't have that audit yet. However, the estimated ending 24, 25, this is to the left of the, the revenues are estimated to be at 26.5 at the end of this year, and the expense is at 26.1. Now, these are estimates, so that doesn't have us in the hole. What got us in the, and it's not a hole, we're not below the road. I'm just saying what got us to the, hey, what? I'm just saying what got us to the, hey, what? What got us to the, uh, the six point eight million right below the twenty-six, one sixty-eight? That's where we moved five point two million to capital projects, seven fifty to state road, five hundred thousand to state street aid for more pavement.
Right.
It's, it's the transfer of funds to fund projects and buy cars and buy, you know, garbage trucks or whatever it was. That's where the bulk of that came from.
So that was up and above what we had had budgeted?
It's the capitals type things. It was operating. Yes.
Is that correct, Scott? Might as well make sure this is clear when we get out there, okay?
It was budgeted, but it was budgeted for capital. It wasn't operating. But you're right. I mean, I'm not arguing with you. The fund balance is going down.
That's exactly.
But it's mainly being used to purchase capital type things.
But it's still.
But it's still going down. You're right.
You've actually gone from twenty-three.
You're exactly right.
Past this budget, we're at eight in two years.
You're correct. That's right.
So this definitely didn't include any raises that we might propose or anything?
That's correct.
That's not even in there.
That's correct. That's right.
So that's a bigger deal.
And I, um, this budget is at twenty-four point one percent as far as the fund balance. Just for fun, and well, that's not a way to word it, but just to run numbers. I ran like a three percent raise. We would still be at twenty-two, I think, percent. And I'm sure at four percent, we'd still be at the twenty percent. So there's wiggle room there is what I'm saying, and we've still made the twenty percent. Now, it may not be as much as y'all want. We'll make the fund balance whatever you want it to be. Uh, but I was trying to run to see, you know, once we put the potential raises in there, would we still make the twenty percent? And I believe we would.
That's, that, that's the reason I'm bringing this up. We just want to make sure that as we go through the year, we can go ahead and vote for the raises and all those kind of things. We've got to make sure the revenue is covering what we, what we're spending. If we don't cover that, then we're going to be back into that fund balance again.
That's correct.
And I think that's what's been happening the last two or three years. And it's, it's not something that we're blowing the money on. We just had needs that we had to take care of. But do we need city council's approval when we go above that budget? If we approve this budget today, if you spend any, any amount over that amount, does it have to come back to the city council or are you just taking, doing that move at that time?
Well, the budget.
You see what I'm talking about?
The budget that y'all approve will be the operating and capital budget. So let's just hypothetically, you approve this budget. Um, this budget shows using that fund balance for these capital projects that are listed. So yes, we would have to do a budget if it goes above beyond this. If it doesn't, we wouldn't. So, um, the city has been in a good position where that we could buy some capital from fund balance. A lot of cities can't do that. They need a new fire truck. They just have to issue a note. They don't, they can't write a check. Um, so our budget is the, the last six years I've been here. It's almost, our capital's almost been like operating because we were able to just, hey, write a check for it, you know, and get used it out of capital. Um.
And as you and I talked about it, I thought that was good if we had the funds available. I'm just trying to make sure that everybody on the council knows that's why that fund balance has been going.
It's definitely getting smaller. It's definitely getting smaller.
Because when those things come up, but do that, does that go directly to the council for a vote before you go over that amount?
Well.
It's an answer of yours, please. And it's just like with the, and I hate bringing this up, but the North Britton project. Y'all approved X amount of dollars. We ran into some significant issues.
Right.
And hadn't come back to you. So once you, whatever y'all approved, we're not authorized to go above it without your approval.
I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear on that. That's what, that's what it has to do.
However, if, if the budget that's approved dips into fund balance.
Yes.
It, it just dips into fund balance because you will have approved it dipping into fund balance. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And I think.
I don't know if I'm explaining this very well.
I think that's what's happening. That's why that fund balance has dropped.
And, uh, and, and I will say this, um, this year, just a lot of things have hit at once.
Yeah.
You know, because we, it's a wonderful thing. We're getting six million for the airport. Our match is six hundred thousand. It's a wonderful thing. We're getting two point five million grant for soccer. Our match is seven seventy. So a lot of matches are hitting this year. Um, you're getting a lot of, um, I won't use that phrase. But I mean, you're getting big grants and stuff, but we have to do the match. So a lot of the matches and, and things like that are hitting this year. And we're not sure yet what the riderways are going to cost on Fair, for Fairfield Pike. We've got a lot of unknowns and unknowns make me nervous.
Yeah.
Um, we still got to bid the flood pump. We, we haven't bid the construction on the overlook yet. Um, you know, we don't know yet if we get the A F G grant for the radios until the end of September probably. So I like it when everything's kind of black and white and you know exactly what everything's going to cost and we're just not there right now.
Well, and we have spent some extra money and Scott can tell us this, and I don't want to take over your part, Scott, but we spent for the parking lot back there, six hundred thousand dollars. It was all approved.
Yes.
And a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the utilities to be buried. And did we put in there about the purchase of the filled property and all that along that, was that in the budget also? But all of that has come out. That was kind of above the budget funding. And so you dipped it into the fund balance that you used. And then, and you told me that we used the fund balance for that?
Yes.
Isn't that what you told me?
We did a budget.
Yeah.
For a budget.
Okay, alright. So we're looking at that and we've got property now to try to purchase for the river wall that, that we've spent forty thousand dollars for rigs and Maloney or somebody to.
Get a consultant.
Take care of that. Okay, so we just need to be careful on those things. Now, if a fire truck breaks down, our, uh, equipment at the airport or the equipment buck needs or whatever, I can see that all of a sudden we've got, you know, and that's maybe why we need that fund balance so that we can take care of that item right there. These other little projects, we need to be careful about where it's going. Uh, I would kind of like to see us in a budget, uh, a balanced budget. So, um, you know, if we can stay within those guidelines and not dip into that again. But like I said, it's gone from twenty-three million down to sixteen million down to eight million. What are we going to do next year if we spend that much? Go ahead, Ben.
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to think too, where are the legal things coming from, lawsuit? Do they come over that, as they do our funds too? So that's in that as well. That's been quite weird. So, yeah.
Any other question? Yes, sir, William?
I've got a fund balance, cash balances. It starts since six eleven, we give six point four. And it's slow. The fund balance has increased from five million to twenty-three million in that time. It's slow every year, but, but it showed that councils in the past, as well as the administration, we actually grew the balance every year for about fifteen years.
Right.
So now all at once, we're wiping that balance out because we've got it. And that's, to me, is just not good. I know we hate, somewhere with this council or the next one down the road, if we want to kick it down there, it's going to have faced around that we can't spend more than we may.
Yeah, yeah. And I think that's what we're, we're dealing with here, especially with those drops that we see. Also, I would like to see, I would like to see us put so much money back each year, and it should be in the budget, for flume repair. We know that we're going to have to repair that flume when these days. That's why I went for the flood pumps when I first took office. Let's get those flood pumps replaced. They're seventy years old. We still haven't got them replaced, but we're working on it. But the flume, flume, I'd like to put some money back for that because we never know when part of that may collapse.
True.
And, uh, uh, and, and other things, you know, property that we're about looking at right now, if we could put back just a little money so that we can, you know, put it for property and things. Throw it just off of it or, or on the market or whatever to, to make some money off of it. But that should be a part of the budget too, preparing for the future.
Yeah, well, and I think that's where we're, while we're in the situation that we're in is because for fifteen or twenty years prior to the council.
That's exactly right.
They have not been preparing for the future.
That's exactly right.
And maybe that's why the fund balance was growing. Maybe that's why all this was still because they weren't putting it where it needed to be to get us where we want to be now or in the future.
Yeah, yeah. And then, go ahead, sir.
If I may.
Yes.
That's exactly what we're facing today.
Right.
Because the A R P money was set over here and interest was growing. And that we're wanting, we're needing to spend. And so you're right, we, we could do, get more money maybe instead over here. But what's happening today, all these projects are hit this year and next year. And so that's the reason we're spending the money that's been saved.
Yeah.
And again, there's been so much money saved in operation.
Yeah.
Just about every department has a positive fund balance moving forward. And it's just when the big ones hit, it, it definitely going to reduce it.
That's the reason we've got to, we've got to plan for the future and infrastructure problems that may come up. We've got to have plans for that. And I'm glad when I took office, the flood pumps, when I found out about them, that was the first item that I was concerned about because we had had a flood, they wouldn't take care of it. Uh, the flume, the same situation. I think they've had one in the last five or six years because they had to replace out front of the fire pump and all that. That was probably one and a half, two million dollars at that point.
But if, if you all want to go through department by department and if you all see cuts that you think are needed, then we can do that. Our city treasurer has already said that we can inflate some revenues numbers and plus, Speaker Pro Tim, Pat Marsh announced that Santa Reevesville did pass on regarding census. It takes effect January one, twenty twenty-six where Tennessee Economic and Community Development will do our census counts for us. And they've already gotten us at three thousand or than the twenty twenty census. If we get first capita, thank funds from that, it won't be a two million dollar increase, but for the six months, we'll probably realize another five, six hundred thousand on state taxes.
Yeah.
So if we do the combination of cuts where you all see the need to and extra revenues, we get closer to balance.
Hello. What's the, uh, what's the idea from the, uh, council members? How do you want to move forward on this? We've got some listing, uh, all fund summary. We've just kind of gone over that, fund balances, cash balances and things like that, general fund. But instead of going through the department a whole, we can flip to the back of the book and you kind of see at page forty-nine what's highlighted. Of course, I went through the whole book and I'm sure, hopefully everybody else did. You kind of see what's asked for, and these are needs, but are they needs right now? Or could they put off, be put off another year? Uh, personally, I would like to see, uh, we've also had the, uh, the lawsuit that we've had to spend money on. And I, I was hoping it was already over with, but now we're going to have to deal with a little bit more on that. So, uh, whatever y'all want to do, if you want to go department by department, you can. Scott, you and Kay, you tell us how you want to go right now. What would you like to do? You want to go to the back of the book or you want to go through the departments or how do y'all want to handle it?
Well, we're not too popular with the department director.
Right, right.
I don't have credit being, but he's probably.
We tried to, and we had some, we had some spirited discussions because we knew so many big projects were hitting us this fiscal year. So we have cut them quite a bit. But again, it comes back to you all. What, you know, y'all tell us what you think needs to be cut or something that you may not understand the request for it and we'll say why we are recommending it and then get the ultimate.
So you're saying, uh, do we go to page forty-nine and look at codes, what they're asking for? And then if we have definite questions, we can go back to that tab in the book and look exactly what they got? Does that work for everybody or do you want to do it a different way? Does that work for everybody? We, I mean, we've got everything highlighted on that back page. These are new up and above the highlighted items. In other words, things that they need right now, right?
So.
Yes, sir.
Actually, Mayor, everything that was proposed, the department leaders, the ones that are in the field day in and day out that know better, me, Kay or any others. They're, they came with what they needed. No bells and whistles, no flashy things. They either brought it to improve services or bringing it to make it more economically efficient to operate. Because several of the projects that have been done has actually started to save money, which is a return on the investment that the mayor and council have authorized pretty much. So I know it's a long answer, but.
So you and the, and the department heads had called and gone through and then you highlighted what the most important needs are? Is that what you're saying?
The highlighted ones are in the budget book.
I mean, the other things are.
What if, what if we have questions about why some things might not have gotten through in a certain department yet? And, and meeting with y'all, is that something I can ask as to why? I mean, do we need to go down it by, by line or we just wait till we get to whatever department we're getting to ask that question?
That's good.
A lot of, again, we understand the strong need or they would be asking for.
Right.
They, they are asking for it to be more efficient, provide better services or to save money. And I know that's lots more on, it's been made to save money. But we're already pretty, that's been the case on a couple of projects that's been approved.
But the, but the highlighted items are, it's included in the budget?
Yes.
Already?
Yes.
But the other items will be up and above that?
If, if you don't say that, yes.
To answer Councilwoman's.
Yeah.
Question though, we knew what challenging budget.
Right.
And we know what stewardship and tax dollars all of you all are. And so we tried to squeeze as much as we could to get through this year. And then again, we see hope on the horizon for extra revenues. And then trying to fill in some of the ones that we're not recommending to you. But the ultimate decision lines right there, dude, fly, something like parrot. That's where it goes.
Neil.
I just feel like we have so many, so many things going on as far as the, those, those big ticket onions that we're dealing with and such. And I think that, you know, it's very important to me to, um, screen one and to, to shake off a lot of things that can wait. And I mean, if, you know, if we're, you, you can inch along just a little bit longer, you know, so to speak. I think that that's kind of what needs to happen because there are some things here that I want. And I'm going to be mad that, you know, surely, you know, with what's going on. I mean, we've got change orders with projects. We've got attorneys, you know, and that type of thing. And all of those things have to be taken into consideration when it comes to something that just, I think, can wait. It's just not as put that way.
Scott, Kay, I'm going to let you take the lead. If you haven't got a department, that'd be fine. If you want to go to page forty-nine and just show the highlighted items. And if you want to go back after that highlighted item and for some reason, uh, folks don't see a need for that, we can go back to what that department asked for and what they have put it as maybe not needed right now. Or you and the department heads made that decision, then, uh, we can do that. You, you guys take the lead and let's go. You voted on who's going to lead.
And also Mayor, we may want to talk about some of, it's in the very back pocket.
Yes.
The personnel request. So if y'all would, please pull that out and it will just start with capital and get your own stocks, please.
Can I see that? Personnel request summary, that's where you're at, Scott.
Right now, we're starting on forty-nine.
Okay, forty-nine, okay. All right, good.
Have the personnel.
He lost me to talk, so I should get. Um, so Code requested a, a new truck to replace a twenty-year-old truck. And I believe Brian told us that this, if he got this, it would get all the trucks in his fleet to more recent, more current vehicles. Um, that is on page ten, if y'all need to look at it, but that's pretty much what it said. Um, and after discussion, Scott told me to put that in. That's why it's highlighted. Do you may have any questions on the?
So, so you're wanting, you're wanting opinions of the council?
Absolutely.
After each of these items are.
Sure, because I got to know whether to put them in or not.
When, when I, when, when we're talking about cleaning up the city and, and getting out our maintenance, um, and.
When I, when, when we're talking about cleaning up the city and, and getting out our maintenance, um, and the cokes and things of that nature, I know that we do receive a report, uh, on it. But I don't see a lot of changes on the report. I don't see a lot of updates on the report. And I don't at all see the city as being, um, uh, even more clean. I just don't see a lot of changes to that. So I don't know if a vehicle is going to make a difference, um, because I haven't seen anything. It's far from it.
We got three, four, nine people in that department right now driving those three. There's two Maver trucks and then that twenty year old truck, correct?
And right now, we have vacancy, but it's vacant approved and will be replaced.
How many miles are they, how many miles, you got any rough idea? Where's Brian, is Brian in here? About how many miles that they're putting on these trucks?
I don't know the exact mileage count, but if you're out, matter of fact, I'm gonna tell on myself. He was sitting in front of my house the other day when I ran home for lunch and my grass was high. I told him, no, I've just not had a chance to get it up with him. He said. He was setting in a half engine. Next day, he got both. But no, I'm out in the neighborhood for a while and I am seeing big difference.
Yeah.
I'm seeing some major improvements and we've still got a long way to go. But this city's been, we're addressing some major issues.
And I reckon it's right though, that his budget at the end of this year will be a hundred and ten thousand dollars larger than what he was budgeted for. Was given the money to spend at the beginning of the year. Is that what I'm seeing?
Yes, so he, yeah, a lot of departments have extra left over and it rolls to fund balance. And we had, uh, budgeted fifty thousand for the condemnation, demolition. Uh, Public Works ended up doing that with their personnel on one of those demolitions we did. So he didn't spend anything out of his budget. I estimated five thousand in case something comes up between now and June thirty, but you're exactly right.
And I ask this then, why couldn't we use this year's budget, because none of them have access that we are going to give them commission for him to have and spend? Could we not move that to another line item so he can buy the truck and then it's not going into our next year's budget?
Right.
We could if we did a budget amendment and there's a truck available and, because it has to, we have to receive delivery of the vehicle for it to count against this year. If the auditor.
Or we could do it.
If it's, yes, if, if it's available and if you do a budget amendment and you have to approve budget amendments twice, so it can't just be one reading. I mean, we're getting close to the end, I'm not.
Right.
It would be doable if everything fell in place, yes.
If we could go ahead and finally add it in order, I mean, this could be something that could happen with some of this other stuff as well.
You would have to, it would, go ahead.
This is the perfect example that shows that the conservative budgeting process we've been doing, even though we call it fund balance, it's actually unexpendative budgets. But they're rolled into a fund balance that even though we budget an eight million dollar dip into fund balance, there's no way you're gonna dip it to eight million dollars into fund balance. I'd bet on it a hundred percent. We never have done before like that when we budget. The, we're, and the audit's gonna show another million or so that we don't show on here, at least rolling over. So those rollovers for those things I've spent will come in. That's, that's sort of the way, I hate to say it's game, but that's the way the budget has kind of worked for, since for decades. And luckily, um, we, we've been able to generate revenues. We've just had a whole lot of investments, and I call it investments, not expenditures, that are hitting, that are gonna be tremendous revenue producers with the soccer fields and downtown complex and all that. In future budgets that we're gonna not, we're not gonna have these huge deficits. They're not, they're, they're just one time expenditures. So I, I'm, I like you, say, hey, we need a thirty two thousand dollar for the evidence or covers, whether we dip it into this year's hundred and ten thousand balance.
Extra.
That's gonna roll over, I just assume, leave it, yeah, let's pay for it, move on. And buck to buck, whatever, not here. We're just skid steer from last year. That if he has money in this year's budget, we could buy it, but at the same time, he's been on the wait list for that for two years.
You just need a budget amendment, and it doesn't save money buying it this year versus next year, it's the same money.
It's the same money that's going back in the.
Yeah, it's the same money, and I know sometimes, and Lori knows more about this than I do, sometimes it would be a mad scramble to try to find vehicles and equipment that's just sitting there to say, hey, we need it next week. You gotta do two budget amendment approvals. You gotta find it because if it's not delivered till after July first, I have to put it in, if it is delivered after July first, I have to put it in next year's budget anyway. Because it ha, you have to receive it. It's happened to be.
That was what I was gonna ask too, because like in the streets and so like ways total, I mean, like that's one of his, where it looks like it's going two hundred seven, three, eight, thirty and two eighty, two, nine, oh, two below what he was given.
And it happens every year, yes.
Yeah, so I mean, there's not, I mean, there's a couple of bigger projects on this capital request that it doesn't look like that we were wanting to give this next year. But we could maybe implement that and let him get those because he's gonna have the excess of this year. Does that make sense?
I understand the question is just, do we have time for the bid process? Are they on the state bid list? You know, it would, it would be, I mean, it would be a fast thing because Lori, I think, likes most persons, firstly, you're not, I don't want to speak for Lori. Some may be available, some may not be available. It would be a lot, it would be a lot of hoops, but.
Drive one of the police cars this year. We're not keeping line item.
Right.
Bunch of fund balances going.
No, we just go.
That's why.
That's why you create a year, so in your mind, yes, he's got a fund balance and he probably needs more money being spent.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
But you just let that roll over and pay for it out of this year's budget, they got plenty of time to buy.
Right, okay, I get that, yeah. Not having to do it now.
Balance is going forward.
Yes, if I may mention this, the difference in taxes that we're talking about. The savings on one line item regarding demolition. And it looks like, well, they've not done anything, they've not demoed any houses. Yes, we have, but we've been able to convince the property owner that it's in their best interest to take care of it themselves. Because if the city does it, there's gonna be a lot more added expense to it. So we've not had to spend that money because we've still got the job done.
I completely understand what you're saying, but it would get complicated if every department the last month wanted to buy a bunch of vehicles.
Right.
I'm not saying I'm against it, but I'm saying it would, it would be complicated.
Right, right. And as Henry was saying there, we, we've got a lot of expenses that we've taken care of, and we have moved this city in the last two years. It has really moved and we've done some great things. But we never know when that flood is gonna collapse. We never know when a tragedy comes through this city. That's why we've got to protect that fund balance. We're down at that twenty four point one percent number right now. So we can't have it drop eight, eight millions this next year. If we had, you know, we're gonna have projects like Madison Street sidewalk, Dairy Street sidewalk, all those kinds of things are coming up. And, uh, if we get anything T dot wise, when you went to see the other day about the four lane out, forty one A West, how much are we gonna have to spend on that? So we have to really make sure we protect that fund balance. As far as vehicles go, are these vehicles assigned to an individual or are they assigned to a department? In other words, if we got three trucks, do we need three trucks or do we need two? And, and two guys can share it. One guy's working on the computer and, and, uh, putting in the information where he was out this morning working on stuff. And can the next guy take it? That, that's kind of way, and we did that at Duck River, I mean, we use multiple people use one vehicle without having to have all of these multiple vehicles. You see what I mean? That's the reason I was asking about mileage and things. Yeah.
Do we have a vehicle policy? I mean, is this the only twenty year old truck vehicle we've got, city's ever worked?
I think they got it at the airport. There's one at the airport that's trying to replace.
Do we have a policy, Miles? I talked to some of the old councilmen, and I, they said that they used to talk about keep their own vehicles for ten, I mean, for ten years.
You definitely have.
Yeah.
But like in, using Cokes again as an example, they have been driving hand-me-downs until recently. And now, if, if this is approved, the director told me he's good for the next ten to fifteen years. Because they do take care of them, we're working better with fleet maintenance, management program, and hoping to take it to a new level. But for today's purposes, this, you won't see this on here for the next ten years, man. That's new one for Cokes. Now, there's several others that need.
I think it's all going back to how well these vehicles are taken care of. Because I've seen some stuff that ain't that old that beat us. And now, I ain't calling no names or no partners, but you just can't take your stuff out and tear it all up. Where we're getting done new, you know, that's not maintenance. Is the maintenance getting done?
Yes.
You know, vehicles are getting expensive, really, really expensive. We spent a lot of money on vehicles.
In the last two years, uh, through Public Works, we started doing fleet maintenance.
Yeah.
And probably longer than that, but it's really showing dividends now.
Partners take part in that?
Yes, sir, they all take them out to, I mean.
Great oil.
Even fire trucks now, fire apparatuses, we, our chief mechanic recently got cert, certified to work on them.
All right, let's resume our meeting. Scott and Kay, you are in charge at this point. I think we're moving forward. Betsy Noel, Ms. Noel had asked a question, and I think y'all had responded. Was it answered correctly?
Yes.
Why did Josh have a question? You're making a question more.
I remember my question was, no, I was just kind of going out. I met with our codes director this week, and his department in particular, we've got a couple departments like this, but he generated four hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year in permits, he feels like, by the time of the year, and he only spent four ten. So he's contributing to our revenue. So the nickel and dime him for one Maverick pickup truck seems a little silly.
Right. Okay. Do we individually vote on each item, or would we just do it all at one time? If we approve, would we say we approved that one?
We did not. Excuse me, mayor, if I could. This is a workshop, so we cannot vote. We can all raise our hands over there. It's not. Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, yeah. All right. So any other comments on codes? Good comment. Uh, Councilmember Blevins? All right.
And I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but do you want to, that's the only thing he asked for, and he didn't ask for any people. So I'm just saying you want to devote that and personnel.
I would think so, yeah, since you're on that.
But he didn't ask for any of that, that county.
All right, y'all go ahead. Y'all take charge.
What do you decide, are we going back to the front, or are we going back to the back, or how are we doing?
Working off page forty-nine.
Page forty-nine. Okay. Just take forty-nine, I guess. But if they want to read the narrative, they'll have to go back to the tab.
Which is page ten for codes, right?
Yes.
Info technology, is that the next item?
It, it, yes. And it's, uh, it's page twelve, and there's a tab for info.
Mayor, Marilyn.
There was a little sidebar here. Um, Councilmember Foulhouse mentioned, um, now, and this, this is the will of the council, but he did mention the fact that another personnel for codes, uh, they're taking a couple of wards.
We hired, we hired one last year.
Right.
And to differ with you, he's done a bang-up job, but I think he's primarily focused on Ward One and Six, I believe, with his responsibility.
They zoned them out.
They zoned them, and he's trying to get to the others as he can, but I, Ward One, has seen a dramatic difference in the cleaning up and, I mean, it's made places that have been derailing for a while, long time, are really cleaned up. And the message has gotten out among the property owners, they can't leave that car sitting on those blocks all this time and that kind of thing. So it's really, you're at Ward Six.
He's done a hell of a job.
Good flush. I think at that time, we talked about adding another one, helping them or something, so I may, they might not have asked for personnel. That's why I'm telling you, if she hasn't seen it in her ward or other wards has cleaned it up, is what I see, then maybe we do need another person if that's our focus as a council to help clean up the city. Because I think the cost is, that person was available, but.
But if we, if, if we've got, and as Councilmember Foulhouse has stated, if he gets through with Ward One and Six as far as taking care of them, I mean, we're not locked in that he has to just be one and six. We've got six wards, so they're gonna, they need to be working on all of them. They need to be working on all of them. We've got two guys, I think, doing that norm all the time. Well, all three of them, okay. So we've got three guys working on that. Now, what, uh, so I don't see, uh, personnel-wise, that we need to do anything, and they didn't ask for anything, so, uh, they, they feel like everything's good. But the truck, I think, and I, I like that phrase of people doing a good job, uh, we do need clamp shovel belt, and, uh, we're, we're working on it. It's a tough process and legal process. Ginger, we have to ask her about all those kind of different things, too. All right, so can we move on from codes? Have we got the trucks, your hands?
My final comment on that, I misspoke when I said he was concentrating on Ward One and Two. I didn't realize we had the other two. The new guy has been focusing a lot on it, and the new guy has made a dramatic difference.
Scott, you, you guys take, take the lead on it, please.
Are we ready to move on? Yeah. Well, now, as I remember, I know we were looking at capital, but by going to IT next, we skipped planning, which didn't have any capital requests. I just had a question on plan, if we can. They didn't have capital personnel requests, so we were just gonna skip.
We don't want to skip.
We don't want to skip.
He has a question on planning, because there's nothing in the back.
Yeah, but, but there's also a tab that says planning, it's page eleven.
Yeah, you want to go back to page eleven, and then work.
Yeah, this is kind of a combo question. Um, professional services, we're giving them a hundred and twenty thousand this year, and a lot of that is for Will as our, uh, part-time engineer. I'd heard from a lot of department heads that we were expecting to get a full-time city engineer. We've been cut engineering out of the, uh, stormwater department completely, anticipating that we were going to. Do we not have any, just hire a full-time city engineer instead of dropping it out?
They still have some engineering, and they had engineering in two line items in stormwater. They had a professional services, the, the engineering at the bottom that was cut out was put in a couple years ago specifically for one specific project.
But if you add all the engineering between all the departments, it's way more than one engineer.
Public Works also has engineering in it as well.
Yeah, I mean, we've spent a lot of money to job out engineering, but we should just have a city engineer.
And have a full-time.
Full-time engineer would cost a lot.
Well, but we're, I mean, we're, we're about eighty thousand in planning on it. How much are we in public together?
Streets as fifty and so.
I think we're at about a hundred and fifty thousand on engineering altogether.
If it's.
Scott, yes, sir.
If it's the pleasure of the council, we have, our next meeting, we can have that information, and we can do one.
We do the math, yeah.
We have budgeted here for contracted engineering.
Yeah.
And then we could have, call them over here, what it would take to hire.
That's good. That's perfect.
But they're not asking for it at this point?
They did.
They did. Wait, wait a minute, let me see what's up pages in my budget.
Nobody turned to sheet.
I think it looks white.
They, they were, we had talked about it, and then again, when it came down to such a tight budget, uh, I was the one that supposed to have proposed it, and I just left it off. But.
I'd like to see the math. Yeah, I mean, it may work out, we may save money by hiring a city engineer.
Well, but would the city engineer also be the, um, project engineer on all these big jobs that we have going forward? They could work for that, and we wouldn't have to hire a project engineer on top of somebody to make something. Correct.
The only thing about that, when you use, go ahead, Scott. I'm sorry, Bill. Go ahead, Betsy.
There are some that a city-employed engineer could not, uh, because two dot certifications, this and that. Now, we could strive to evolve to where they could take on a bigger grant role, but the day-to-day that we have right now in stormwater, streets, planning, he or she would definitely pay for themselves.
He would benefit from all those kind of things? Okay, all right. Well, we, we don't have it in our budget right now, so we're not looking at it.
I, I will say this, uh, when we get the Griggs and Maloney bill.
Yeah.
It's usually like two, three, four people's names on it, because it's not just Will, it's Kevin Chastain, other people. So, I mean, it's multiple people, not just Will. So we gotta, that, if we hire one person, they're gonna be having a lot to do.
Get one person do, do.
I don't know that answer, because I, I'm not an expert on that, but I know some of this professional service and planning is, uh, Kevin helping with planning issues, not necessarily engineering, storm pipes and stuff.
And I got those numbers from Tom, and he said only about fifteen percent of this is Kevin, the rest is all Will. So, and that's on his.
Or Will's other employees.
Yeah.
And another thing that could become a vigil, vigil cost savings. Number one, our planning directory is getting more self-sufficient and not having to rely on the consultant as much. But even more importantly, the General Assembly just passed legislation where they're reinstating planning services through DMAS and UTIPS. So it's gonna be a free service that we can.
Excellent. Excellent. Okay, so we need to look at that before we talk about adding anyone, if they're gonna provide those services.
Oh, that's, that's limited, but it's mainly something and stuff.
I just want to make sure I got the direction to you is to come back next budget meeting that we have.
Have a side-by-side.
And I may need for some actual bills, so you can see.
Noel, that take care of your question, too?
Most all of these, like on planning, have, at the very top, where it says salaries, are, are you automatically giving these guy, all of our department heads, like eight to ten thousand dollar a year raises? Is that what that is?
No, I, I can explain that. You see the seventy-three five and the eighty-two five?
Yeah.
Okay, so we split out, if you look on down there, we don't budget for sick, vacation, holiday, and all that. We, like, if Tom takes off and it's vacation, it hits the line item that says vacation expense. If, if, if Tom or the, uh, Brandy take off, or if it's sick pay, it's sick pay. So you have to add.
Okay.
That's why it is.
I understand. I'm good.
Because years ago, there was a city manager, I wasn't here, he wanted to see the benefits and the breakdown of what type of pay you get and all that, so it started getting busted up like that. The only time you'd ever see a full salary there is if nobody ever took a day off.
All right, Scott, okay.
Going back to page forty-nine of the capital request, you have two that are recommended. The number one is the TDC one hundred handheld GVS data collector. And that goes hand in hand with, on your personnel request page, to, for the GIS technician, which is estimated that total cost of eighty-four thousand five hundred. And this is key to our mapping, well, anything, code, uh, IT, Public Works, is all critical. It's all critical, and we're under state mandates to update our services. We made improvements with very limited staff, very limited knowledge, but the way things are moved forward, there's gonna be a stronger demand to have correct information. And let me apologize to mayor and city council in advance, there will be a couple of these departments, my knowledge is limited.
Question on this, it's on the second thing, on the drone. The drone will also pay for itself, because we already pay, what, twenty-five thousand dollars a year, or maybe not twenty-five thousand, you pay a fee every year to have somebody to inspect the flame, correct? And so this will help take pictures of the flame and do, um, that, we don't have to pay that additional fee.
And if we have the person that can operate the drone, which we would have, it would definitely say twenty-five to twenty-six thousand a year. And again, that cost is creeping up, but we're mandated to have the flume inspected annually, and it's, last year I was like, it was twenty-five thousand.
I don't recall right off, but it's around that much. And the technology that you see from the drone, and the lidar and all the thermal will be a whole lot better than what we get right now with the little red ring around the picture.
So next.
Hire somebody to run the drone, too?
Well, that's gonna be the G, that's gonna be the technology person that.
There's two, there's two people on your techno, what, eighty-four, five a piece? What about training? Could I get that job?
So the drone that, that looks at the, the flume system, or whatever.
So there are many other things.
So why can't we share the drone that uses, that, that goes there?
We're paying for these services now, for somebody to run that drone, so how much does that cost?
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand dollars a year. So they're having to update their own equipment and all those kind of things, the one that we're, we're hiring to do that process, correct? What you're saying, this, this drone that we're talking about, is that the one that can be used in the flume and can be used outside, too?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
And, but we need somebody to operate that drone to go into the flume, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
How much is that?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four thousand five.
I would rather pay the twenty-five thousand dollars a year, let somebody else update the equipment.
And it also covers the GIS, this will be your GIS.
Yeah.
I think, that would be my understanding. Is that correct?
But we don't have, but we're still having to hire outside city to operate.
Well, that's cheaper in the long one. I know we didn't contract meter readers and all those kind of things like that. You start taking benefits and taking care of all that like that, you're talking friggin' size money. That twenty thousand, forty-four years, you know, that's a hundred thousand dollars, but if you hire, if we hire somebody to do that, we're gonna be spending that every year, seventy probably thousand dollars for that person to be hired, their benefits, and all those kind of things. Then we gotta keep the equipment up to date, is another thing that we have to be paying for. So we're talking a hundred, a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars a year, when we can get that service done for twenty-five thousand dollars a year.
Can we? Kate, explain this, because we've got, neither one of these personnel positions, I don't think are drone technicians or strictly for the drone at all. Who, who's gonna, who controls the drone?
Well, either I could do it, I've already trained, or the GIS person would be co-doing any drone operations, and as pointed out, it's for more than just the flume. The flume, easy one, because it's a hard cost we already have. But there's a litany of other things that we need to be doing for different departments that it could cover, and the same personnel can be trained.
Yeah, the GIS tech is significantly more than a drone pilot. It's used by multiple parts to, yeah, to do our mapping, which we're way behind on.
Who's gonna be responsible for it if it goes down? Here's another question. I gotta ask it, you ain't gonna like it. That camera right there, I church Sunday, the lady come up to me, said, Bobby, what's wrong with that thing y'all got, your recorder? It, it makes me so mad, I could die. It points at one person, and then somebody, William over here's talking. It's been that way ever since it was put in here. I said something to you about fixing it or figuring out why. It's still no work.
We're limited with what we're funded to have operating?
All right, that's more funding, okay. No.
I'm just, I, I have a problem with, that we don't, we really don't have an IT department. We have the IT person. There's no department.
No.
Department needs personnel.
No, God.
And I'm looking here at the, um, it's, it's for the site inspections, road inspections, and all of this such and other things for, I guess, for this equipment, and I just don't see one person doing this. Yeah, but see, that's more intense. Or something that we may can hold on, at least, I mean.
Because this year, we're still in negative, we've already spent more than we had coming in this year. We have reserves, so how much more do you want us to spend? And that's just like William said, we sitting in here as a council, somebody, it comes from all of us, and council meeting, wherever we need this, this, we vote, yeah, let's do it, and it just keeps adding on up the thing. That's what, that's the reason it climbs, like it climbs.
Well, people like, who is one person, too? And he's issuing sixty to a hundred help desk tickets, I put my thing here on Facebook, take it down, my password needs resetting, I need help, yes, my printer's broken. Yes, my printer's broken. We're at a cybersecurity state rating of one point two eight, which is low, which is very, very low. And so I just, I, I personally feel like at least Kate was one person. And if that one person could be GIS certified, then that would go a long way to help move us in the right direction that we need to be. GIS is important in a lot of ways, not just for us, or just for Kate, it's for a lot of departments.
And we see that, we, we've gone for two departments, I guess, goes in, in IT now. And, and everything's just moving right along and we're, 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 we're going right.
The people are dead.
Yeah, we're going right by this book. And we're proving everything you know. So where, what happened to the point earlier that we were going to uh a little slim things down and, and take that eight million dollars into consideration and, and not do that. But sure enough, some of these things are pertinent. I mean, it would be nice to have this seventy thousand dollar drone. Uh, but this might not be the right time.
Yeah, I think with us uh hiring outside, Scott, what do you feel? That hiring outside, we, we've been doing okay on that?
Well, budget maker.
Yep.
In order to take a baby step forward, if you asked me what between the two IT capital requests.
Yes sir.
I would do the GPS data collector and get the GIS technician to where we can start moving forward because knowledge is everything. And we've been sorely lacking. Now, due to the talent and several of our department leaders, we, we're maintaining. But if we could move forward with the GIS technician and the data collector, the planning commission meetings, all this other will get us at least to the twenty-ten atmosphere. And we can hold up on the drone and eat the twenty-five, thirty thousand annually until we stabilize and see where we are financially.
So you're saying if we do the uh, the uh handheld GPS and add a personnel and not do the drone right now, that personnel is gonna be uh fifty uh.
Here's a fact.
Yeah.
That's how much the GIS person would pay.
Eighty-four thousand.
Eighty-four?
Eighty-four, five.
It's sixty-five plus benefits.
That would be, yeah, yeah.
That's up, that's up and above what we got in the budget right there already.
No, it's more budget.
No, it doesn't say it right here. Oh, you're talking about over here on personnel.
Yeah. All of them ones are in the budget, right? So both actually, both the positions are in the.
Position and these two devices. So that's your recommendation, Scott?
Yes sir.
Council? Anybody else?
I'm still confused. Okay. The GPS data collector, fifteen thousand, and the personnel. That's it.
That's what Scott, that's what Scott's.
Hundred thousand dollars.
The GIS.
Hundred thousand dollars.
How much is the personnel?
Eighty, eighty-four, five.
When I estimate, let me, let me throw this out. When I.
Is that more, is that more than what our IT director makes right now? Cause it's only seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred thirty, but that doesn't count benefits, right?
Correct. It's sixty thousand five plus benefits. You get to the eighty-four, five. And it's always hard to know how to estimate benefits. For one thing, you don't know if they're gonna be married, or family coverage, or individual for insurance. So kind of as a middle ground, I always assume it's gonna be married spouse. Cause you know, the city pays different based on what they choose. So it could be less than that, it could be more. That's kind of the middle ground.
So we have a, enough for, I mean, an abundance of things to do for this person and this GPS data collector.
Yeah, cause we don't have anybody doing this work right now. So, yeah. Yeah, nobody's doing GIS work for the city right now. So we have no, yeah.
So we're getting by without it now. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
We're doing perfectly.
Yeah.
We're doing fine now. Mr. Mayor, what are your thoughts?
What is my thought?
Yes sir.
Well, we think GIS, there's no doubt about that. We need to catch up on some of those things. Is that something that we can reach out and somebody else do for us? Just like the drone, the guy that's inspecting the drone, that's only costing us twenty-five thousand dollars a year. Do we have to hire somebody and buy the equipment for this GIS? Or can we, can we uh contract out to somebody to do that for us?
It would probably be like the engineering, sir, because again, this is ongoing. I mean, every time a new subdivision, every time a new house is built, this GIS data needs to be updated. And it's been a struggle. And so we may be able to contract it.
Yeah.
But then you have to wonder, is it cheaper to have an in-house person or contract out? So we can.
My opinion would be to try to contract it out first. If not, then we could decide on getting that.
We need to look at it instead of.
So we don't have, we don't have that information in front of us.
Somebody get us some numbers to compare it to.
I'm kinda like council member Levins, and he wants the information and numbers on city engineer. Uh, can you, can you get numbers for a person contracted out?
I do have a number for that.
Okay.
Next one, step one, just for stormwater, GIS first year was ninety thousand dollars to start with. That doesn't do any other projects, that just.
Ninety thousand, just one base one, which was stormwater.
Which was the initial build and like one board of data collection.
The initial build and one board of data collection, ninety thousand dollars.
Stormwater, just for storm.
Just for storm, for, doesn't include, like I, the way that I understand GIS and I, I had to take a class on it and stuff that, um, for, for.
It's important.
Right. It gets becoming more and more important. And it covers like utilities and, and stormwater and property lines and, you know, just like all kinds of information.
That's another one, things been put off for years. I don't see that, been put off and put off and put off. Uh, is this the time to do it or not? Scott, can you get us a number, an actual number on the contract person? And we've got a number on uh employee and the uh data collector there uh so that we can make a decision on whether we'll contract or go ahead and hire someone?
Yes sir. And if I may, I would like to ask Kate, our IT director, one more question. Uh, based on the ninety thousand, that is, they're still more than.
Yeah, it's just the base building, like make the boards work for data collection.
Okay. And please explain what I'll contribute to for us, Scott.
Uh, they're the ones that are taking zoning and annexation changes and updating that map, make the board map. They don't do data collection. They can only use what we give them. Which is limited, obviously. So we don't have the means or methods to collect anything more detailed.
And how much is that?
Thirty thousand a year.
Okay. If you have this new position with the tools to work with, do we sell that thirty thousand also?
After first year. Yeah.
Go ahead, before you fire it for cash.
Put that on black, in black and white, for the next budget meeting. Will you do that?
Yes sir.
Get everybody agreeable, everybody.
Put it out for bids. Don't just take it the first person. I'm sure there's a lot of people.
It's, it's important, there's no doubt about it. You're like, this was behind, probably ten years behind. Okay, uh, are we, do we, the drone, we've decided probably not to do that and go ahead and go contract on that, Scott?
I don't agree. I think we need the drone, but I keep it.
Okay. Drone?
I think the drone is multi-departmental. I'm afraid, it's kinda like what we looked at last year when we looked at the drone. It's dumped under IT. The fire department and the police department, both works, everybody gets to use it. It's, it's a multi-department issue and they've escorted it now two years in a row.
Why, does that sound?
Multi-department gets to use it. I agree with Henry, who's gonna be responsible when it gets tore up.
It will happen.
It has to be.
It will have, it'll have a warranty.
It'll, something that it proves on what we call a warrant for your insurance.
The last time they asked, I think it was ninety thousand, wasn't it?
Somewhere.
That truck.
Yeah, truck, eighty thousand dollars.
Forty thousand last year, wasn't it?
But it would not then take the terror of the flume. This one.
Are we required by the state to have the flume inspected?
Um, to my knowledge.
Because there's only one, I understand there's only one company in the United States where we can assemble the flumes, therefore be able to work on it. And they're states away. I mean, it's sort of my understanding, we're just at mercy of the flume cause it's fifty-five, sixty years old and it's out, it's only supposed to last fifty. Our plans need to be, if, if it does, we don't really need to put another flume in there. Cause when you only got one, one company that will build it, I mean, put it together and one company that builds it, you're asking for super retail prices. And there's gotta be another option besides something that's already out, out, that's gonna fail. We need to look at another option. I mean.
Here's my thoughts. If you, uh, if we're gonna get this drone, I would like to have an explanation of every department, how they're gonna use it, where it's gonna be used, who's gonna be responsible for it, what kind of warranty we're gonna have on this drone, all that kinda stuff in front of me before we make that decision.
Amen.
That's big money.
We, we can certainly address every bit of that.
That's my personal feelings. We need all that information in front of us. We can't make a decision here, just discuss it. This one can use it, and that one can use it and all that. Let's, let's say, planning and, and uh, um, public works and all those people, they put down exactly how we're gonna use that equipment, where it's gonna be used, how many times a year it's gonna be used, all those kinda things. We don't need a technician sitting in the office upstairs, um, in the basement.
It does, it does give us that on the capital item request, kind of at the bottom of the justification of some of the things that this, that this will do.
Two hundred twenty-one thousand dollars if we, that's with increases and everything on page number twelve for IT, if we did everything. Yes.
Wouldn't there, wouldn't there be a drone flyer? Someone's gonna fly that drone. But, but we just discussed that Kate is, is, is taking care of iPads, computers, phone systems, this and that. And that, now how is this person going to fly a drone with all of the departments? And, and fix everybody's stuff with GIS? So, so I'm still not getting it. I'm still not getting it.
Okay. Can you get that information for me, Scott? I, I, that's what I would like to ask. Is that agreeable, city council? That way we can make an intelligent decision and a, and a uh. Okay. If, if that's okay with IT, then let's uh take a break for lunch. Lunch is here. Uh, what do you want to take, take, can I, for thirty minutes?
Yeah.
Thirty minutes? Let's have a break.
Thank you.
All right, let's go forward, please, please.
Okay, if I could, if I could have everybody's attention, it's obvious that we're gonna need that second budget workshop, which I had set for Monday, June the 2nd at 5:00. So, I need to make sure that's okay. Is that gonna give you all enough time to gather the information that they asked for? Do you want to move it later in June? But I have to, if it's going to be the 2nd, I have to advertise it right now. That's why I have her bring me my computer.
I've got it on my phone already.
Mayor and City Council is great when we can have the information.
Yeah.
Okay, so June 2nd at 5:00.
Is that okay? Is that good with you?
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you, Lisa. All right, Scott, Kay, Kelly, I'm sorry, Betsy.
Can I say one more thing about, before we move out of IT, just, the drone, I know a lot of people think it's not necessary or anything, but it's also a public safety asset, because by using the thermal camera cameras, you know, they could be able to find things, find people.
Right.
That would be another problem to having that.
Does Police Department not have, y'all don't have anything like that now, do you? Drone or anything like that?
No.
Does County?
DMA does.
Okay.
I don't think, I don't think the County does.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Betsy. All right, Scott, Kay.
Okay, General Government, Kay, you're working well, coordinating all of that, and in essence, the only thing that we're recommending at this time is the flood pump purchase and install. The flood pump purchase and install.
Okay.
And, and that does not have the 900,000 contingency in it.
Okay, how are we going to treat, both, this question for both of you, how are we gonna treat, I know negotiations are all already in place about the property for the Police and Fire Department? Are we gonna try to budget this next year for trying to handle buying those two pieces of property if we get them? How are we gonna handle that when we take it out of those, that fund balance, right?
No, sir. What we will propose to you all, once we get the full package of information together, then we'll present it to you, and it'll probably be a major multimillion dollar to build it and everything.
So, we wouldn't buy the property and then, is it her name, Ginger French? Is that who, she'll be working on the design, is that right?
That's her.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I'm talking about just the purchase of the property, approving those dollars if those two people, if we work out a deal with them and everybody else involved. Will we do that this year?
If you all want to go ahead and proceed with that, you'll, of course, you have to choose by one, but there's multiple options that we can present for your consideration. Number one, purchase of the property and all things associated with constructing the building can be one option, or we can purchase the property through a short-term note issue. We've been working with CML Bot Fund, and short-term note interest rates are favorable, and until we decide how, how much further we want to move with it.
Can we, if you think we might be ready by June 2nd, that we might move forward with putting in our budget, the cost of those two properties? You think we'll be ready by that time?
We might, we might, no.
Okay.
Of course, I want to make sure that you all have the vote on those contracts.
I'd like to have that in the budget for next year if we're ready to do it, and if we can pay for it that way. Does that sound, everybody agree with that? We're talking probably, what, 700, 800, 900,000 dollars to buy those properties, maybe? Okay. Does that sound reasonable if you have that information by June 2nd, Scott?
I think we can.
Hopefully.
Thank you. Ginger's working on that. We appreciate her doing it, and Lisa's helping her too. Doing this right, Lisa?
We're so, that's what Lisa did, yeah.
Matt and Jan, you've just got to probably work them on this. I appreciate you. Thank you. Let's get that done. Okay, go ahead, Scott, Kay.
Okay, let's see. Of course, by doing it in the back, we're not looking at the operating budget, but if you have a question on the operating budget, we can go for that.
I have one on General Government.
Okay, it's on page 13, and there's a General Government tab. Probably the tab's easier to find.
Yeah, just professional services, what is, what all is in that?
It's a lot of different things. The bulk of it are attorney fees, whether it's just our regular city attorney, monthly stuff, we also pay, there's just all kinds. The audit comes out of there, our portion of the reappraisal, that's the county bills us each year, that's around 20,000, we pay part of the tax management audit, this is County does, auditing properties, we pay about 10,000 of that a year. Our 15,000 a year we give to EMA, and they may call it something different now, but it, it comes out of there, I believe, and just a lot of different things come out of there, but the bulk are attorney fees and audit. And I, that was hard to know how to budget, because we don't know how long this next round of the appeal will go.
Do you, out of that 700, do you know how much of that you've set aside for the appeal?
Well, a normal year would be over there to the left, the 438 that was audited, that had like about maybe 50,000 of those people in, so I would say a normal year of that line item would be more like 400,000.
So, about 300.
That's rough. That's really rough, but I wanted to overdo it in September.
Any other questions? Did we actually underspend under our current budget for that line item?
Well.
We budgeted, or, looks like we're...
Look, this year we overspent, but...
Yeah, we invented it several times, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, and of course, we don't, I don't know what they're gonna bill at May and June, and I don't know what the normal...
Oh, you have, I thought you may have gotten...
We just got through April. I don't have May and June for our regular attorney fees or them, so I mean, a lot of it's just estimates. A lot of this stuff you have to estimate for two, three, four months, because a lot of people bill a month behind, and there's a lot of unknowns in this too. Ginger, could you lower your bill the last time? I'm joking.
He's billing July.
Yeah, I'm just joking.
Yeah.
Just don't count for all the calls, I give. Any other questions on operating on 1340?
Getting back to Capitol, being thoughtful with the police departments.
It's page 15, if you want to see that.
They requested four, moved four pursuit vehicles, and we asked, and this will be equipped, and we asked if they could, since a larger number was bought last year, we asked if they could do three this year, and basically it worked.
They're on a rotation for that, like, they get so many every year to try to, because they put so many miles on their vehicles every year.
Well, and especially with public safety vehicles, both police and, it's not necessarily mileage per se, it's the hours. I mean, sometimes they set their idle for a significant period of time, and that wears their load, but they've done a good job, they're working very closely with public works, fleet management, and keeping them on a regular rotation and maintenance, so it's going well right now.
I don't see a highlight on the tech and radios, what's her plan, tech?
To find out what we need, when we need it. So, right now, we put that on hold, because the county still does not have, to my knowledge, a definitive plan, and so we, the main reason for all this is so all emergency personnel in Shelbyville, Lakeview County can communicate safely, and so it's kind of a hurry-up-and-wait situation at this time, and once we get a definitive plan on that, we will bring him back to council before we do anything.
Okay. Does County have, go ahead, Bob.
Do we have a policy on vehicle replacement? 10 years, 20 years, 100,000 miles, 50,000 miles? What's possible?
There's a rotational policy, but I'm not 100% up to speed on it.
We, we get 10 years at least, a minimum of 10 years, I think, to be here. We go at least 10, something, well, we got something that's 12 and 13 years of. We, and we get, continue to get new ones, we sell those out, surplus those out.
65,000, almost 66,000 dollars a piece? How much do the cars cost? Why are we getting cars off the, how much do cars cost on special contract?
That's a, contract fully equipped with all the lighting and everything on it, except our, except our radio and radio. I thought you...
And graphics. They put the graphics on it, took 65,000?
How many cars have we purchased in the last 10 years? 10 years?
We've rotated out, 40.
40?
I've got a list of that, I didn't bring it with me.
10 years?
We're surplusing, what, eight, nine, seven, and actually surplus, that'd be getting new ones, we surplus the old ones out, that's 12, 10.
And in essence, the only thing that we're recommending at this time is to plug, pump, purchase and install. To plug, pump, purchase and install.
Okay.
And, and that does not have the nine hundred thousand contingency in it.
Okay. How are we going to treat, both, this question for both of you. How are we gonna treat, I know negotiations are all, all, already in place about the property for the police and fire department. Are we gonna try to budget this next year for trying to handle buying those two pieces of property if we get them? How are we gonna handle that when we don't take it out of those, that fund balance, right?
No, sir. What we will propose to you all, once we get the full package of information together, then we'll present it to you and it'll probably be a major multi-million dollar, uh, to build it and everything.
So we wouldn't buy the property and then as, is it her name Ginger French? Is that who you, you'll be working on the design, is that right?
That's our.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, but I'm talking about just the purchase of the property, approving those dollars if those two people, if we work out a deal with them and everybody else involved. Will we do that this year?
If you all want to go ahead and proceed with that, you'll accordingly, I choose by one, but there's multiple options that we can present for your consideration. Number one, purchase of the property and all things associated with constructing the building can be one option, or we can purchase the property, do a short-term note issue. We've been working with CML Bot Fund and short-term note, interest rates are favorable, and until we decide how, how much further we want to move with it.
Can we, if you think we might be ready by June the second, that we might move forward with, uh, uh, putting in our budget, the cost of those two properties? You think we'll be ready by that time?
We might, we might know.
Okay.
Of course, I wanna make sure that you all have all those contracts.
I'd like to have that in the budget for next year if we're ready to do it and if we can pay for it that way. Does that sound, everybody agree with that? We're talking probably, what, seven hundred, eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars to buy those properties, maybe? Okay. Does that sound reasonable if you have that information by June the second?
I think we can.
Hopefully.
Thank you. Ginger's working on that. We appreciate her doing it and Lisa's helping her too. Doing this right, Lisa.
We're so, that's what Lisa did, yeah.
And I think Matt and, and Jan, you've got probably working with her on this.
Oh, yes.
I appreciate it.
Oh, yes.
Thank, thank you. Let's get that done. Okay, uh, go ahead, Scott, okay?
Okay, um, let's see. Of course, I'm doing it in the back, we're not looking at the operating budget, but if you have a question on the operating budget, we can go for that, um.
I have one on general.
Okay. It's on page thirteen.
Yeah.
And there's a general government tab. Probably the tab's easier to find.
Yeah. Just professional services, what is, what all is in that?
It's a lot of different things. Uh, the, the bulk of it, our attorney fees, whether it's just our regular city attorney, monthly stuff, um, we also pay, um, there's just all kinds. The audit comes out of there, uh, our portion of the reappraisal, that's the county bills us each year, that's around twenty thousand, um, we pay, uh, part of the tax management audit, this is, uh, county does, of auditing properties, we pay about ten thousand of that a year. Uh, our fifteen thousand a year we give to EMA, and they may call it something different now, but it, it comes out of there, um, I believe, and, uh, just a lot of different things come out of there, but the bulk are attorney fees and audit. And I, that was hard to know how to budget because we don't know how long this next round of the appeal will go.
Do you, out of that seven hundred, do you know how much of that you've set aside for the appeal?
Well, a normal year would be over there to the left, the four thirty-eight that was audited.
Mm-hmm.
That had like about maybe fifty thousand of those people in, so I would say a normal year of that line item would be more like four hundred thousand.
So about three hundred.
That's rough. That's really rough, but I wanted to overdo it in September.
Any other questions? Did we actually underspend under our current budget, that line item?
Well.
We budgeted or, looks like we're.
Look, this year we overspent, but, um.
We invented it though.
Yeah, we invented it several times, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah. And of course, we don't, I don't know what they're gonna bill at my engine unit, I don't know what the normal.
Oh, you have, I thought you may have gotten.
We've just gotten through April. Uh, I don't have my engine for our regular attorney fees or, um, them, so I mean, a lot of it's just estimates. A lot of this stuff you have to estimate for two, three, four months, because a lot of people bill a month behind and, uh, there's a lot of unknowns in this too. Ginger, could you lower your bill the last time? I'm joking.
He's due you in June, July.
Yeah, I'm just joking.
Yeah.
Just don't count for all the calls, I'll give. Um, any other questions on operating on thirteen forty?
Get back to Capitol, being involved with the police departments.
It's page fifteen, if you want to see that.
They requested four, new, four, six vehicles, and we asked, and this will be equipped, and we asked if they could, since a larger number was bought last year, we asked if they could do three this year and basically did, did work.
They're on a rotation for that, like they get so many every year to try to, because they get so many miles on their vehicles every year.
Well, and especially with public safety vehicles, both police and, it's not necessarily mileage per se, it's the hours. I mean, sometimes they set their idle for a significant period of time and that wears their load, but they've done a good job, they're working very closely with Public Works Fleet Management and keeping them on a regular rotation of maintenance, so it's, it's going well right now.
I don't see a highlight on the tech and radios, what's her plan?
To find out what we need, when we need it. So right now, we put that on hold because the county still does not have, to my knowledge, a definitive plan, and so we, the main reason for all this is so all emergency personnel in Shelbyville, Lakeview County can communicate safely, and so it's kind of a hurry-up and wait situation at this time, and once we get a definitive plan on that, we will bring it back to council before we do anything.
Okay. Does county have, go ahead, Bob, go ahead, Bob.
Do we have a policy on vehicle replacement? Ten years, twenty years, a hundred thousand miles, a hundred fifty thousand miles? What's possible?
There's a rotational policy, but I'm not one hundred percent up to speed on it.
We, we can get ten years at least, minimum of ten years out of each vehicle. We go at least ten, something, well, we got something that's twelve and thirteen years old. We, and we get, continue to get new ones, we surplus those out, surplus those out.
Sixty-five thousand, almost sixty-six thousand dollars a piece? How much do the cars cost? Why are we getting cars off the, how much do cars cost on special contract?
That's a, a contract fully equipped with all the lighting and everything on it except our, uh, except our radio and radio. I thought you.
And graphics, they put the graphics on it, took sixty-five grand?
How many cars have we purchased in the last?
Four hundred.
Ten years?
We've rotated out, forty.
Forty?
I've got a list of that.
In ten years?
We're surplusing, what, eight, nine, seven? And actually, we surplus, we surplus the whole ones out, that's over twelve, ten, eleven years old.
And that's forty in the last, how many years?
I had, I had a list.
Seven, eight years maybe? Does that sound right?
Sure. I was ten.
Okay. Okay. How about the dispatcher? Did y'all need to address that personnel? Can you ask for?
Yeah.
This was a request last year, and again, this is a public safety issue to make it more efficient and allow flexibility of scheduling, because, you know, we're shorthanded if one decides to take a vacation.
Right.
Somebody gets sick.
Right.
It really puts a strain on the system, so, uh, once again, requesting disposition that will allow two per shift.
Didn't he have one retire last year? Did he have a dispatcher? Or maybe she was just off, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Detective worked as a detective department.
Yeah.
So dispatcher, you've been short on the dispatcher for a couple of years?
Oh, 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 we never had two on each shift. We, we've got two on the three shifts and, uh, we like one, the other shift has had one on the night shift.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sure our solid values continue to increase.
Yeah, I have, have listed one.
So the increase.
I read that when you split out, uh, that's good information, and our response time is actually.
In some calls, you probably do need a backup because it may be a, a really bad call and you might be too many people to call or another one's, so it's good to have.
Two thousand fifteen, ten years ago, we were running thirteen thousand calls a year. We're twenty-six thousand last year, so, so, so twenty-six thousand calls a year, about twenty-two, twenty-three thousand a month.
Scott, Kay, you got anything to add to that?
Anything else on police? Moving on to fire, for this particular fiscal year, uh, the chief has not requested any major cap yet, because it'll be coming in years to come with more apparatus, uh, but we do have a grant pending for the radios, and if we go ahead and approve the funding, then that makes the grant ineligible, so I think the grant is supposed to be announced sometime in September, and so then we'll come back with a proposal on how to pay for radio safety along with the police.
Have they got mobile radios now? Sorry, they got mo- mobile ra, you have mobile radios now?
Yes, sir, it is, the, all pending on tech, it says.
Okay.
We've applied for the AFG, y'all, uh, recently let us apply for, for ordnance, which is the handhelds, because that was the only thing eligible under the guidelines of the AFG grant, uh, mobile radios, which were actually mounted in the vehicles, uh, those will be addition to, like I said, we couldn't, we couldn't, uh, budget for the ordnance for that.
Okay, thank you. Scott, you have anything else to add on that?
Not on fire, sir.
Any questions from city council? If we purchase the property this year for the police and fire news stations, uh, would it be something we could put the vehicle purchases off for the police department, maybe to use that money, Jan, or? Don't know. Need it?
You know, yeah, and once we get behind the vehicles, your maintenance really increases.
Okay.
We, we actually cut back to four, which we've always, when we, in the past, we've been trying to get five, we cut back to four this year to try to be a little more, uh, service, and, uh, Scott has, we will do, cut to three, so that'd be fine, we can get our dispatcher.
Okay. And Lori, we still got some of those government surplus vehicles out there, sitting beside the building out here?
We got these there, they're surplus.
When are we gonna get rid of?
I'll approve three or four of them at the main meeting.
Okay.
So the rest I haven't brought to you yet, they're not quite ready.
You know when they'll pick them up?
I have to list them.
Okay.
My plan is to have them by June thirtieth.
The parking fee's eating us up. Thank you, Lori, thank you. Okay, anyone have any questions for the fire department? Really proud of our police and fire department, every department, as far as that goes. All right, Scott, Kay?
Okay, for the three, you can say you listed his needs to improve the efficiency and service to the citizens, our, such a tight budget this year, we reluctantly made several suggestions. Now, our Public Works Director has gotten or forgotten more about Public Works operations than all of them know. I mean, I know a little bit about Public Works, so I kind of rely on all of our directors to just tell us what you need, cut it if you can, and this is what he presented, and after a very discussion, he said, he has to have motors, that is one hundred percent need to have, but several of these other issues, like the, uh, sign truck, the two thousand six sign truck is on a, either a half ton or three-quarter ton, and if you see all the equipment on that truck, I'm surprised it's not sitting on the ground, and, but in our conversations, one thing that we'd like to just put in your all, back of your mind right now, as we're getting better and better with fleet maintenance, because all vehicles, all departments across the city now are going to Public Works for their oil changes, repairs, everything, and also, there's programs out there that have quality used vehicles, and so if we could maybe decide on a pool of money to let our chief mechanic and others and the purchasing coordinator for Public Works seek out vehicles that we need, whether it's a Ford Maverick type truck, if we could get a quality used one for twenty thousand that we could get ten years out of versus thirty-two thousand, brand new, it'd go a long way. Uh, I remember an example of vice mayor helped us with recently, we were getting a gas cart for one department, and the vice mayor says, hey, I know something we can do here, and I think we ended up saving eight thousand dollars, so, if we could get a pool of money, multi-department, and see what's out there on the state market on used vehicles, now this does not pertain to police vehicles and of course, fire department, that all these other departments, for example, the hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar, uh, four two fifty, or, that's a ton, ton truck, isn't it?
Yeah, three fifty.
The three fifty for the sign truck, if they were permitted to go to these public auctions and stuff, they could probably come across and get good quality vehicles that meet our needs for a lot cheaper, but by the time those are viewed at no auctions, you've got to have that authorization up front. You, you can't say, oh, will you have that vehicle for me, let me go get approval in two weeks? That won't work, so what's your all's thought on that?
I'd rather have a new vehicle. If we're the city, tell me, girl, when you buy a new vehicle.
Just like a car auction.
Tell them not to buy somebody's used vehicle, I don't think.
You buy stuff at the car auctions, it's as is, where it is, as is. I know plenty of car dealers right now, they hate to go, but they can't get no used stuff anyway, and the mechanics are doing very well, because most of the stuff going through the auctions are jumping there because.
And so you get the warranty on new vehicles, and, and, you know, we, we just, I think we need to, from my, my standpoint, those kind of vehicles, we need to go with, with need.
And the reason we're throwing that out there is because we are trying to save money wherever we can, but I certainly understand, and I, I know a couple of our council members have been heavily involved in car auctions and everything else, so.
I mean, now, is that sign truck used?
Just on the auctions, uh, we're not gonna, it wouldn't be something that we'd go by, fly-by-night auctions or anything, these state auctions that were taken and maintained, maintained by the state that would have records with them. I wouldn't go to some auction out in the middle of nowhere for something like that. In other cities and everything else like that, we did have a, an auction fund, so, you know, I had a list of items that, you know, I was possibly looking for, and one of those items came up, I had the ability to purchase that item at that time. If you have to do a little work on a, on a truck, I bought it, I bought, just an example, I bought a three-quarter ton pickup for six thousand dollars from the state auction, it booked down at twenty-three thousand, so I put a thousand dollars into it in the truck, I think they just got rid of it and I left there about twelve years ago. So it's, it's that type of thing, flexibility, trying to save money, hey, if you want me to buy new all the time, I'm all for it, but if we're trying to find ways to save, I would never buy a garbage truck used, I would never buy anything that, that I had to have complete reliability out, but a one-ton, something that somebody used for a year and they're getting rid of it because they leased it for a year, or something like that, that would be, that would be the direction I go. And to speak to you, the sign truck, the sign truck not only handles all the stop signs, street signs, putting them back up and everything, but that's also our fleet, uh, maintenance vehicle, our, our building facility maintenance vehicle, so it has our plumbing supplies and everything else, it has a compressor on it, it has a welder on it, it has torches on it, anything that we might need when we go out in the field to fix anything. It is a three-quarter ton that we got from, I believe, the park back in the day, that we put this box on, and I hate to look at the springs too closely right now, because there's a lot of weight on it and it's overload.
It's almost twenty years old.
Yes.
Any new vehicles we buy, like trucks or lease vehicles and all those, do we take those to the Ford or Dodge or whatever dealership we get those from for service for the first three or four years or whatever, whatever the warranty is on it, or do we?
If it's something that's covered under warranty.
Yes, sir.
We carry it to them, if it's just service items, we do it.
Go ahead and take care of it.
Mayor, we have two fully certified mechanics at our shop, so we have the ability to maintain warranty by doing those.
Okay. Questions, city council?
The operating budget's on page nineteen, if anybody needs to see that.
I just think that, you know, Public Works is, in general, they touch every single individual citizen of the city of Shelbyville, other than police and fire. They work hard, and you gotta give them the equipment and the things that they need to continue to do that, whether it's for streets or for maintenance, or pushing the snow so we can get to work, you know, I mean, I just think that that's just a real, a real commitment that we need to support. I know they get stuff in the past, they've got some stuff in the past, but, you know, if we don't, if we keep pushing it down the road, then they're gonna need it next year and the next year and the next year, and, you know, when are we gonna give them?
Well, that's the skid steer.
Yeah. I have it on my list. Uh, can I give a little, little background? Um, last year, uh, you guys approved the capital budget, uh, we were able to save over ninety thousand dollars in our capital budget that you guys approved last year. We, uh, we went from, uh, we was gonna get a tandem axle, uh, garbage truck, uh, we went with a single axle, which saved us ninety thousand. As you guys recall, last year, when we had the Skidster auction between us and cemetery that mine got left off, so I do have the money in there this year, it's just not appropriated to it, it would have to be something that you would have to appropriate to it, or if you wanna roll it over so I can get it next year, I, I'd love it. Fantastic.
Okay, are we talking right now, Scott, uh, let's see, have we gotten to the part about the increase in paving?
No, sir.
That's not in this part of the budget?
That's three days, and, I don't know, that's the city talking about.
Yeah, and Ms. Noel's statement, I, I don't understand, what, what are we, what are you thinking that we're not doing?
Doug, the skid steer, and he's been asking for, for a couple of years, you know, we've given other, other things to other departments, and, you know, he needs that to do his job to, for them, not him to do, but for his, for his people and his crew to be able to continue to do their jobs, just like, you know, I wanted to ask, I mean, these steel plates to cover holes in the streets, do we have plenty of those? Do we, is this just something that we need just to have in case we're doing more repairs or?
Yeah, we have a limited inventory of that, so what we was gonna do, that's one of each size, so there's a, there's a ten footer, there's an eight footer, there's a four footer that all come with that, so that was one of each size, so any, any work that we're doing in the road, uh, the crew that, you know, the public works crew that I have, the, the street portion of it, we're doing more and more, I, I don't know if you guys noticed over there, uh, at the, at the parking lot and, and the stuff that we've been doing, um, we're doing more than what we did five years ago, and we're getting pretty good at it, and I want us to do, be able to do even more, and without having the proper pieces of equipment, it, it just, I try to be efficient, I only have so many people and I have, only have so many hours, so in, to figure out what makes us more efficient, I don't come up with these on my own, I sit down with my, my leadership group that I have out there, all my guys, we, we talk about these items and they're well thought out before I ever put them on a piece of paper.
And just to let, Ms. Noel know, last budget year, we went from six hundred thousand dollars to one point one million for paving in the, for our department, and, uh, I think that's half the whole lot of it, but.
I don't know, I, I, to me, paving is the biggest noticeable outcome I can do. If I put stormwater in the ground, nobody sees it, but if I pave your street, then you think you're getting what you paid for in taxes, so the more you put in paving, the better we all look, sir.
Make, make sure, make sure you put those cover holes on, because that would really, I, I think we'd get some complaints on that.
Yeah, I, I think the utility company does enough of that out there, I wish they'd fill in a lot of their holes that they already have open, so.
But I wanted to let Ms. Noel know that we had increased that last year. So, go ahead. If I hear you right, you have money left in your budget, capital budget this year to possibly buy a skid steer, can you not buy one possibly before June thirtieth and let that?
I could, if I had the appeal on Tuesday, it would be delivered on Wednesday.
Can you get us a budget amendment? Thanks for taking through that budget amendment we passed on Thursday.
Thank you.
That's all that can be done by me. Y'all could perfect it. Y'all could perfect it, Jan. Yeah. Looks like we got the money available, as long as you're not taking out of the fund balance, and he has cut the, the, that savings and he's got it, let's, well, we'll do it.
But is it in stock, Buck? You checked them out?
Yes, it is, I checked it out.
It looks like that should be worked up between you and Scott before it gets to us and then he can.
Do, 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 do.
Yeah.
I don't have in front of my balance, but I guess.
Yeah. Let's get buckets.
Okay, I'm gonna put a yes on that and a yes on the two motors.
The mechanic is not a hot, well, we hadn't gotten solid waste yet, but we can get it next, right? Finish with that, that iron?
More discussion, I'm free. Well, did the operating, did y'all have a question on page nineteen about that?
Yes, one, one comment I'd like to point out on the general operating funds for streets, despite a twenty thousand dollar increase in. Despite a twenty thousand dollar increase in health and health insurance, the overall increase, bottom line increase for the street department is only twenty-five thousand. And that, he included fifty thousand to help upgrade our guardrails. Says, which I don't think has been done in recent years. But still coming in, just requesting a additional twenty-five thousand.
And, and part of that's because we amended his budget to add fifty thousand to repair the road accident thing. So that got increased, so then it, it would really be fifty plus twenty-five, but if, if you took in that account. I don't remember the name of the road, but.
Signs and things like that we're talking about for the city limits and all that, that's not coming out of this budget, right? Scott?
No, sir. No, kind of doubt.
Yeah, I thought, I thought that, uh, the street fund had done really well. I mean, only twenty-five thousand dollars and they had decreased in so many items when I was looking over at the flat weekend.
Yes.
You guys are in charge. Y'all move forward, what we need to do, whatever you need to.
More questions on the streets? Moving on to public works. Finance and the administration is recommending the twenty-eight thousand for the road off dumpsters called the new transfer station that'll, uh, play a part in that. And then, again, fleet maintenance and mechanic shops do so much more for us now. That they can start, if approved by council, they can start doing the I C work on all of our vehicles.
And the operating budget's on page twenty-one behind the solid waste table. Majority of the increase comes from the landfill.
Yes.
Okay.
Hundred forty thousand. And then a twenty thousand, a hundred and ten thousand to help each other. They, they put together a very brutal general operating budget. And the twenty-four yard garbage truck, that in essence is a warning shot that that'll be coming in the next few weeks.
That's longer than that?
Big enough.
How many you got now?
We.
Three big ones?
Yeah, we, we have three, four. We have one that's, there's always one broken down, so we have three operating at any given time. So garbage trucks, just so you know, police, you know, they can get ten years out of theirs. Garbage trucks have five years, you need to start looking at replacements. Just too many moving parts.
It has a hot dog comes on it, it's a challenge.
Yeah. Any questions on solid waste streams? Anybody in council?
Just, I think the route ware is a good idea eventually. I was looking in that night, asked a bunch of questions about that. It's kind of a, it'll help efficiency with training because I think those say they're changing, um, one person to drive the garbage truck routes, uh, for a month or a little over. And this would decrease it to about a week because you teach them to, to learn the, the dump truck, the garbage truck. And then this route ware will take you on your route, you just follow it like a GPS. But then it also protects them, reduces the kinds of complaints because it takes pictures and cameras around. Like somebody calls and complains and says, oh, you did this to my garbage can or whatever, then the camera would just probably.
Show the picture, yeah.
Yeah, so that's just something for everybody.
That, that was, um, the main thing with the committee and, you know, because we didn't have a chance to get the committee together and stuff like that. Things like this that is time savers, money savers, I, I know it might not seem like it, it might just seem like software. But, you know, we operate with ten less people than what they did ten years ago because of the advances that we've made out there at Public Works. So I would never ask you guys to add something that's gonna add more money, more labor or anything else like that. Trying to make what we do efficient and, you know, be respectful to the, the customers that we have out there. Eventually, you know, we're gonna have to be able to track a lot more than what we do on the garbage. And right now, it's just go out and look for garbage cans and pick them up. So for us to become more efficient and so you guys have better understanding what we do. You think about every, every house that we pick up, that is one ton a year of trash. So every house that gets, new house that comes in, that's another ton, that's another ton. So our prices and everything that we have with landfill, it's not gonna go down and it's always gonna pull up, so.
Any other questions, Tom? Scott, you okay? Need to move on?
Moving on to the cemetery. Y'all are well aware, aware of our budgets that they're mowing every day. The gate on paint entrance to Willamette has really made a big difference in safety, security and convenience of the cemetery. So he asked for one on the Dover Street. And felt like that was appropriate and it's, it's taken care of. No more after hour calls if somebody didn't stuck him there. The extended camera coverage, he asked for thirty back. And that was fully completed, the security cameras at Willamette. And then go over here at one next to First Baptist. But due to the budget constraints, we asked him to finish one before we start another. And he, the sexton agreed to the twenty thousand. Uh, paving and road repairs, you all provided a significant amount of paving next, or last year. And he's wanting to continue the good work. Requested fifty, we asked him if he could give about forty, he said it'd make a big difference. And lastly, the equipment trailer. They share a lot of equipment between their portion of the department and this trailer. The trailer they have now is same bed age. And this would help both safety and efficiency. And snowplow, we said nah, we only get one every year, so we're not gonna say that at that. But this is council mayor's decision, y'all, let this all what you say. I think we're too generous, I mean, giving a thousand to the cemetery and twenty, twenty thousand to Public Works, basically found a balance, but that's, that's the way.
Should be using some equip, some equipment that we can between departments as best we can, right? And, uh, that's good.
That trailer will be able to hold all the equipment that is used in all those, so I mean, that's graded for that weight and everything.
In time and efficiency and safety, whenever they ask for equipment back, that's day three.
So you set an automatic gate for Dover Street, but what about the one on, uh, Lane Parkway? Is that automatic already?
Yes, sir, it's already on automatic with seven day time.
Okay, it, it closes at dusk?
Dusk.
Okay, and you need one for Dover Street or does the last person out of there, what time do you guys usually?
Oh, I change the lock, I normally lock the chain just two hundred pounds. Um, we'll change it up at four o'clock when I leave. So the front entrance is the only thing from whenever I'm not in the office, they have to use the front entrance.
Okay, so you normally, what you're saying is you normally close that Dover Street and lock it and then the front gate stays open all the time?
Yes.
So you need the automatic for what?
It, it will allow, if you have a funeral, and most of our burials happen at the back of the cemetery. So instead, they're having to reroute and then go out front as well. All your traffic is just on Lane Parkway. The back entrance, I've had several last, they, if their family's in the back of the cemetery, they won't be able to use that back entrance.
The Dover Street.
The Dover Street side.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
If we have the, um, camera, the, the two gates automatically closed, what is the big need for the cameras?
We still have vandalism or could. Camera coverage, it would be from the top of the hill all the way to the front.
But they have to walk in to?
If they hit, if they hit the front gates with a vehicle, we have no, no camera coverage at all. The reason this cost is so high is we have, being a cemetery, you cannot have utilities. All of our utilities are on the perimeter. To, for, to get wifi from our shop all the way to the front, we have to put a, a meter on every, on each pole that we put a camera on, which is five thousand dollars. Most of this is the electrical legwork with working with shovel power to provide us power in our weatherproof boxing. The cameras, not that much, but it's getting, that, so electrical running serves.
And, and vice versa, the vandalism that I've witnessed been called both at Baptist Church and Willamette, it's not from visitors to the cemetery. It's from people walking through and deciding to enjoy whatever, won't go there. But just hanging out there and, and sometimes they may have a little bit too much to hang over and then decide to turn over tombstones or whatever. It's, it's a sad situation here. The sextons called me on various occasions and said, you won't believe this one. And it is hard to believe.
We have spent seven thousand dollars. That was not busted so far in the last year and a half to two years, just in damages, just to kind of get things. That's not fixing everything, that's not including what we fixed in house. That's just stuff that we don't have the equipment, manpower to do.
What about property for the cemetery? Ben and I had talked about that some time ago. Are we looking at new property for cemetery in the city of Shelbyville?
That would be the wishes of the council. Um, you know, we mentioned it at the strategic planning.
Yeah, we don't necessarily have to put in the budget right now, but if we might get an option on a piece of property, if we see something, uh, property to them pretty quick. What do you think, Scott?
Yes, sir, and, and there's a lot of studies that needs to go in that because most cemeteries, and this is first city cemetery I've ever been involved with, but a lot of personal stuff, both, you know, work to funeral home and.
Right.
Of course, burying loved ones. Most of the cemeteries I've ever been involved with have been perpetual care. And this one, I don't know how we address that and I'm not smart enough to know. We can talk to some people and get a plan together if that's well with the council and mayor.
I knew we talked about the, that First Baptist, we don't have any room, we don't have any room at Willamette, right?
We, we do have room at Willamette.
For the next, for the next couple of years?
We're good for a few years.
Okay, all right, yeah, we put that off, but, but we might even keep our eyes out just in case. Anything else, folks? Scott, okay?
Okay, moving on to stormwater management, then we had one request. And I know how many calls each and every one of y'all received on storm drainage issues. So we think this will be a good investment to help us try to be more proactive, be aggressive about the issues across the city.
And the operating's on page twenty-four.
Any questions on stormwater?
What's the, what's the difference in, uh, wait a minute? The amended budget for common employees, how many employees we got? We got Brian Dickey, who else? Just two?
Just Brian Dickey and one other person.
Sir?
Brian Dickey and one other person.
Okay, so we amended that budget twenty-four, twenty-five to add that second person? Okay. All right.
And there's still sixty thousand in professional services for engineering, I think we're only gonna spend about twenty-five thousand this year.
Yeah, but their budget has decreased, right? Just like me. Stormwater.
Yeah, because that extra engineering line is not there.
Okay.
Fame will owe in a hundred thousand one year and sixty-five thousand the next because he charged one sixty-five for some study he did. I don't remember what it was, but, um.
Our camera package for pipe inspection is different than what we were talking about before. This in particular, like stormwater, those smaller drain pipes and everything, right?
Yes.
Uh, is that something that, uh, Mr. Dickey and, and his assistant can handle the operation of and recording of and all those kind of things like that? Anybody have questions about that? What do they use now? They don't crawl up in there, do they?
Yes, sir.
They do?
You have to get down and look in the pipe. So we don't have any, sometimes we can have, uh, the sewer company when they're not busy, but right now we have no way to inspect pipe.
Wow. That looks like amazing, man.
We'll take volunteers if they want to.
I think I'll pass on that because I'm told with water and sewer system, I'm electric guy, we try to stay up in the air. We did have on some on the ground electric, right, Bob?
Yeah, Mark.
Okay, Scott, okay?
Any more questions on, uh, stormwater? Moving on to animal control. When they put this request in, I went out, visited and talked about, you know, techs and others. And this is desperate need because it's hot in summer and very uncomfortable in the winter. When the building was built, I've built it in everything, but its ventilation system has two things in each, each of the buildings. And that's it, they have to use space heaters and other means to get the animals comfortable and the employees safe and sound.
Questions, folks?
I think it's, we're taking these animals, some people are doing everything because they're mistreating their animals, that we need to take care of them, hopefully God.
Operating's page twenty-five.
And the reason. Did we touch on personnel requests right there?
The reason operating jumped up ninety-nine thousand is because we're proposing a new position of animal care and control director. Forty-nine thousand, seven fifty-four plus business, rounded off to seventy-four thousand. And it will become standard.
Question. Ryan Cruz did this faithfully the whole time he was assistant chief. And now we got a new assistant chief and we need to, now we'll have new director. Why? Isn't that part of assistant chief duties?
As it stands now, yes, sir.
So.
Go ahead.
So what is the salary, the extra salary for our assistant chief to, to do those duties at the animal control?
That position does not make additional money in my knowledge for handling animal control.
Yeah, I do, yeah, I do not see, we don't need any more department directors. And the reason I say that is your position, Scott, as city manager, trying to handle all of the department heads, the smaller number of department heads you have, the better job you can do and they can do. I don't see it, we might need another position there, but I don't see we need to. I don't see it, we might need another position there, but I don't see we need to name a new department director. I don't, I don't see that personally.
I feel just the opposite, I feel like we do. Because he would be, he or she would actually be just like the other department heads. They would be here, they would actually be in charge of, I don't think, I don't think the place department assistant chief needs to be. Animal control needs to really be used in the building. And we used to have an animal control group in a few years.
I've made it, animal control's time, it's time consuming. I mean, we all, I think, probably get calls constantly or pictures sent and things like that on animals, whether it be roosters or goats. Or dogs or cats. And I mean, I think that with the duties that Mr. Mathis has in the police department. But the animal control kind of is consuming and would not allow him to get everything that he has to get done in there efficiently.
That being said, I don't think this year with the financial state we're in this year.
Yeah. That's seventy-four thousand dollars in the end of the budget.
I don't think this, I don't think this year is good.
Yeah.
Yeah. Nobody in this guy didn't say no? No. Now, what, what I would say about, what I would say about animal control is we have got to find some way to enforce it. I mean, we have got all kinds of things happening. I was at Hillcrest Funeral Hall this last week and they led me out right after the rain took place. I was visiting for former mayor Stevenson and they said, Mayor, can we talk to you? And there's like all these fighting chickens in the lot right next to them. It's covered by, but they said ministers when they're trying to provide a service at cemetery. Or anytime they're having any kind of, those chickens are, those roosters, the roosters, not just chickens, are roosters. And they're just crowing like crazy. So they said, Mayor, can you help us? It's affecting our business, it's affecting all the visitors to our cemetery. And this guy has been called on the carpet multiple times, is that correct? We've got to get some enforcement.
Yes.
Now, we can't take the roosters and put them at city hall. What are we going to do with them? We, we passed the ordinance to not have roosters in the city limits. We've got to put some teeth into it. And I'm not talking about eating chicken. We've got to put some teeth in, and, go ahead.
No, Nick, I was going to say, one of the things that we have been working on and have been, Deputy Chief Mathis and I have been attempting to try to get with. Who is kind of overseeing, not your director, but who's sort of overseeing animal control for me to get a better idea on what their enforcement is. Let me tell you, I have talked to a lot of people since this comes up a couple of months ago. I do not see how you have any way to enforce the roosters, the tethering, anything. But by citing them into municipal court and then being fined. I've talked to everybody. You do not have the right to go on private property and take them either way. It's a municipal violation. But this would even be for dogs, for cats, for anything else. What the police can do obviously on violations of your municipal ordinance, that is also mirrored in state code. So there's certain things about animals that you can do. If an animal's being neglected, if an animal is obviously at large, not on their property. That's a whole different ballgame because you're talking about a state violation that gives the police and animal control the right to do what they need to do and pick them up. All of that's in state law. When you create something on your own in your municipal code that does not have a mirror to state law. You are limited, the Tennessee Supreme Court says you are limited, take them into court, fifty dollars a day. So, or you can, I can say you can enforce it, but you enforce it through monetary means. And much means it is very labor intensive. It's paperwork and labor intensive. You've got to have the people in animal control that will take a case and stay on a case. And I've talked to, I've talked to quite a few people in test, being police, being legal, being finance, everywhere. That's just what you're, that's just what you're looking at. You do not have the ability to go on some people's property, take their dog or take their cat or take their rooster. Unless there is some kind of state violation going on. And that's usually when you've got abuse. Okay?
And if I may, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Mayor, in response to your specific concern, uh, the owner of the rooster was contacted. He was unaware of the ordinance. But he has agreed to relocate him outside the city limits.
Good.
But he's still got to come to court to make sure that he's removed.
Okay.
Well, you go, you go before, understand that state law does allow, Supreme Court says that every day a violation exists is a new, every day is another violation. So there's a potential for a fine up to fifty dollars a day. But you also have to have the proof, which means you have to have personnel.
Right.
Go almost every single day. Almost every single day. That's why I say it is, I was reflecting what Councilwoman Noel said, it's, it's labor, it's intensive in enforcement in that area.
So could, could someone tell me, explain to me what purpose it serves for a person to be fined fifty dollars a day? When our discussion in this room, this body has discussed, we don't collect that. Normally we don't collect that. So isn't it null and void?
Well, that's.
Is it because we don't have the labor?
I think it's the priority of the council. If you want to make it a priority, you've got to make sure you got the people in, in animal control. And then you all have to make certain that in administration, that you make that a priority and you go collecting. That's how, that's how you enforce it.
Well, I'm not sure a seventy-four thousand dollar director is going to make a big difference on that.
Yeah, I understand. I understand, and it'll say that, that's, your hands are tied in that if you wish to enforce those, the animal control. That, and I say you don't make them up, those other places have them, but that is truly a municipal violation. It is not a crime, it is not criminal, it's not a criminal violation in the state of Tennessee. It is a civil violation.
We have the same thing with codes. In other words, we have people that have, have been in a, in a situation with codes multiple times. And have been in the legal system fifty dollars a day. They don't sign the letter that's sent to them, registered letter. They don't show up for court. John T, I've been to city court there. He said they, they don't show up for court, they don't do any of those things. What kind of teeth do we have? See, we don't have them. So we need to be very careful on any new ordinances and things that we might put into place to make sure that we can handle it before we do it. Now, this gentleman has said he's going to move his, is that correct?
An email came down.
That is good. That is really good. I'll tickle the folks at Hillcrest today. Yeah, the, uh, but, but we, like Jager said, we're in the situation, it's just like dogs tethering. If we find out that, that somebody's being mean to those dogs and stuff, we can do something.
Well, if, if they violate, if we put parameters on how long a dog could be tethered and all that. Those are not things that you could go pick up a dog for. There is a specific state statute that deals with if a dog or animal is tethered in such a way that it. It, it is cruel or, or safety, I'm not sure exactly the exact language. That's something different. That is something that an officer could actually then take action on. But, because it's got a mirror, but if it's just like, hey, we tell you that you have to put them up by eight p.m. and they don't. That's just citing them.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we are going to have a standalone meeting to, to address several of these issues. But respectfully, for today's purpose, can we give a yay or a nay on move forward with the director's decision?
Nay.
You may want to have, you may want to have this further conversation because it is, there's a means of enforcing it, but it's all money. It's all work, time and money.
Well, I think they're, no, I don't think you have to.
But.
I get, I've got a good buddy, just let me throw this out there, I got a good buddy lives in town, very wealthy. Lives in a nice sub-business town, as you can find. They've got roosters, folks, don't get nervous. He laughs at us, he said, don't worry about it, we got them too. We're not the only town in Tennessee that's got roosters and dogs and chickens and cats and everything in front of us.
And in test, it's like, it's not common. There are other communities that have banned roosters, but it's not all that common.
Yeah. So you suck ten, four thousand dollars.
The answer is no for the director, right? Did you get that note, Ken?
To summarize what I'm hearing is, at this time, no one the director, but I move that, then yes on they check.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, oh yeah. Absolutely. Everybody else agree?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. All right, next item please, Kay and Scott.
I'm going to ask Kay to explain this one because it's grant related. I'm going to ask Kay to take the lead on this one. Preparation.
And I was going to ask Scott, but anyway. Okay, so I guess we'll start with the capital. Uh, as you know, we got the two and a half million fund grant. Our match that you voted was seven seventy, so that comes to a total of three two seventy. Because I have to budget the full expense and then budget the two point five million in revenue. So that the net is our match, so that's why that's three two seventy. The second item there that's highlighted is the rail to trail project. We actually had, that originally was a hundred and twenty-six thousand that was approved last year.
Right.
Um, I think they ran into a few issues they have to kind of sort out. And after talking to Trevor, he felt that the twenty-four thousand was a good number to put in instead of the full ninety-six. And I can't remember exactly what that was for, but I know we did the survey and we're paying for that this year. Um, what was the twenty-four thousand, Trevor?
The survey.
Okay, Trevor, survey.
Continue.
The continue with the survey, okay. And then the mower, he felt the mower was a priority because obviously they do a lot of mowing. Um, the other items just, in fact, Trevor said his, uh, that he turned in what he saw coming in the next five years. He wasn't necessarily saying, I want this this year, I've got to have it this year. Uh, Scott, you know, talked to him and he, he really needs the mower, the other two rollovers. The others he turned in just so got the kind of, they are just previews of coming requests. Am I saying that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. So he wasn't asking for all these this year, just wanted y'all to be informed as to what may be coming up.
Are we sure, and I know I've heard some talk about this, this rail to trail thing. Are we sure we're going to get in this one hundred percent? That, that's what I was saying.
Swiping back.
If I may, Mayor.
Yes.
Then of course we'll be of mayor of city council, but the preliminary surveys, show a lot of issues that. And gaps in ownership and this is bad, so it, it's going to be challenging if you all decide that you want to spend three million dollars off the trail. We'll do it, but it's going to be challenging.
The other thing, Trevor may not be here in five years.
Don't get us to show a hand.
Make sure. This is how this soccer complex comes out. Well, we knew that, that Josh and I are on the railroad authority board and I'm vice chair of that. And they keep pushing for us to do something, but with the roadways and all the things that we've got, main roadways for that, that path. I just don't see how it can work at this time. There might be some short sections where we might be able to do something with, but I just don't know, Scott, you agree?
Mayor, I agree with you, man, so I just put, I just get the information together and then put it in the holdout.
Okay.
Look, as y'all can see, we're going through this process, we can go under major priorities.
And money wise, we just, yeah. Okay. Uh, the two point five million, have we received, we received that after we start work?
My understanding is it's served, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Let's just say it together, synchronize it.
Reimbursed.
Yeah, yeah, you pay it first and they get reimbursed. So that's one reason we need extra cash flow and money on hand. You know, if we have to write a big check, it could be a month or more before we get the money back. So you never want to be really tight on cash. Uh, but it is a reimbursement grant and I'm sure it'll be paid out over several months.
Okay, another question I have, the seven seventy that we have to, our portion of it, when does, when do we have to pay that? All this next year?
Well, is it scheduled to be finished by G thirty next year?
Um, twenty, uh, February twenty twenty-seven is the scheduled end of that LPR.
We can split that?
Well, I just don't know how far along they'll be by next year.
It, well, the. The seven seventy will be paid out over the next two fiscal years.
Okay, okay.
I don't know how much each year, but it'll flow into fund balance and we'll have it.
Based on how much work is done at that time?
Right.
And it's based on the percentages, yeah.
Right, it just depends on how fast the construction moves and.
Yeah, that's a great thing for Shelbyville, by the way. What about the position?
Is there, there's athletic, but that's a different.
Yeah. It's a different.
Department, it's a different.
We'll, we'll get to it in.
Are you talking about athletics, is that what you're talking about?
Assistant, so, assistant athletic coordinator.
Right, that's in a, that's in a, a different operational budget, but we can look at that now if you want to. Uh, that's, um.
Athletics.
That's sports league, page thirty. Um.
Yeah. William. William Smiley Bliss.
He's.
Scott, Kay, please take it.
If I may, just councilman's issue concern or question. The reason we did not post this or recommend this to you all is we want to get the talk of sales operational. And then we think you definitely be a need. It's a need now, but it becomes critical once we have six fields operating.
Okay. Good. Fresh, Scott K.
That's all then. Any further questions on the parks? All right, moving on to rec center. Uh, the director requested sixty, but he readily agreed to do a phased process to upgrade the equipment. The equipment badly dated in the regulation. But he said twenty thousand a year would maybe the need for was significantly, the council has agreed to.
Bobby, will he be here three years, you think?
Karen Kay, let's cut it close, I think you're going to get back to me on that. If he lifts all his weights with this new equipment and walks in, I think. Okay.
The operational is page twenty-eight, page twenty-eight's operational, if you have any questions on my.
Can I report?
If there's not any questions, we've already covered the sports leagues and athletics.
I got about, I just got one observation. I have before we leave Parks and Recreation. If I add up, because we see Shelbyville does this for everybody, no matter whether it is in Shelbyville or not. Our parks is budgeted for one million, fifty-two thousand next year. Our, whoops, I now lost my page when I started flipping. Anyway, the, we get them back, what's this important? Parks, did I say parks? One million, the rec center, lost my tabs. I raised my finger. Rec center was right at two million.
Right, one point eight.
One full ball field, ball leagues, right, or sports leagues were a hundred forty-six thousand, I think. What, I think I saw.
One seventy-three.
One seventy-three. You add up all that, it's three million dollars. So fees we're collecting are minimal for that three million dollars. So when, if you want to get on the back of the city of Shelbyville, what do we do? We support the county's recreation parks program, three million dollars a year. What, Henry, what, do we get your stock? Plus you spending capital in this budget, three million, three hundred thousand dollars, just this year. Go ahead. So I don't want to hear it that the city of Shelbyville's not doing it yet. So. But why, why, why do they soccer field become operational? That ain't going to be cheap, folks, I'm telling you.
That ain't gonna be cheap, folks, I'm telling you, people sitting here right now, that ain't gonna be cheap. Pop dressing, mowing them, it's not gonna be cheap, just keeping them up. It's not.
Turn on the bathrooms.
And that's gonna be a big expense, and that's for the county, we don't.
I looked at the county's budget, all that from last year, I could find nothing for recreation.
Yeah, no, I got upset at you. You're one of them.
Very good comment.
Mr. Mayor, I, I, since you already said this, I, I was gonna say, at the very beginning of the talks, the soccer fields and such, uh, the expansion then, uh, didn't we throw out the fact that, you know, we would ask the county for, you know, help and solicit for other donations, the next type of thing, didn't we?
Yep.
So what happened?
They've got any response, sir.
Didn't we send a letter? Send a letter there, the council voted to send a letter.
And the response, you got to negotiate the tax.
And it was a very, very good word you left.
Still no response, right?
I was thinking authority there.
I guess I had decided.
That would be a great.
Moving on.
All right, Scott, Kay.
I'll, I'll, I'll just flip it to the center for it.
Grant bar.
And again, this is a lot of money being rolled over and most of it is 95% covered by grant funds, which will show in revenues. One even, 100%. Uh, he did ask to replace a 2002 vehicle, but he thought it would be appropriate. And then of course, his 600,000 dollars should match off of 6 billion dollars worth of work that's gonna happen now.
And those are gonna be in three to four different projects, we don't have all the details yet, so that's why I just did a line item that said match on 6 billion. As we know more, I'll probably amend that into line items that sound good, but just, I just balked it in there.
This is, this is going back to Weaver's point and the others on the deficit. The 600,000 dollar match, isn't there some way that the revenues coming from the airport or somehow uh, got land leases and all kinds of things out there that would help toward that 600,000? Are these numbers included in our revenue side somewhere, so that they do offset each other?
The leases, the leases are the revenue. Now, the auditors this year, and I talked to Patrick about it, they're kinda re-categorizing some of the revenues. Like, I haven't even talked to Paul yet about this, but we're getting the same, we're getting revenues the same, but some of them, they have created another, uh, line item, let's see. Instead of putting everything in hangar rent, if it's a capital lease over a year, uh, they're now putting it down in, um, I think it's called lease income or something. Anyway, it's being split up differently, but I mean, it's still adding up to what we're getting in payments. Um, I know at one point, a year or two ago.
Our monthly rentals or yearly rentals on like our teen hangers versus somebody owns it, they're renting the land, leasing the land.
Yes, cause I asked him why they lowered my hangar rent, because that's not what we got, but now they're putting it in, uh, interest on leases.
Got it.
They're doing that.
Okay.
But also, I think a year or two ago, it was mentioned, um, like the extra land we bought near the airport. Right now, I think it's still just in the city of Shelbyville name. At some point, does it have to be put in the airport name before it's counted as revenue specifically for the airport or something? Thought I heard that one time, but anyway, we can, we can address that.
Our, our goal, I guess, was that basically the airport's paying its way.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's paying its way now.
And amendment one.
Additional things come on, I guess I'd like to see the revenues matching up with the expenses somewhere.
Right.
Based on the reason that they're, they're making money now because of that lease that we're getting for 20 years.
Yep, it was three.
And that put them, before that time, we were losing money at the airport every year. We were very focused.
We weren't too proud of that lease.
Uh, I just reached out to MTSU, I guess, yesterday, and, uh, that amendment one is still making its way through the process because, and as soon as that, as that gets signed, I can bill them for the 90,900, you know, that additional 4.8 acres. I don't have that yet, but I'd like to have it by June 30th, so they have to pay it within 30 days of when it's finalized, and I'm trying to nudge them a little bit.
I've been preaching to about 390,000 dollars a year, sir.
Yep.
Uh, the 600,000, Paul, do I remember coming to a meeting and you discussed, uh, maybe that 6 million dollar grant that we had received from, uh, the feds, that, that we would try to cover that with something else? Did you say that at one time? You remember that?
There is a, a possibility that, uh, they will, they had given us the opportunity to request a grant towards the terminal building.
Yes.
For up to, uh, 500,000 dollars, so we can cover not all of it, but a big chunk of it, assuming we receive the grant.
Okay, so if we get that grant, then that'll offset that 600,000 dollars we got on the, on the list.
We can use, we can use that, uh, set aside as the local match, cause it's a, that is one of those grants that is 50/50, but, uh, we're able to use the federal side as the local share.
Very good, I wanted all of the council to know that, uh, council attorney was on that airport authority board. The, uh, aviation fuel for resale, we making any money off of that now? I noticed there was an increase.
Yes, sir, that's the plan every time.
All right, utilities, I've noticed, utilities, fire water, are everything separate metered, like these hangers that are owned by the individuals? Are they separately metered?
Those, the long-term leases are separately metered, the short-term leases are not.
Okay, so that's why we've got an increase of that 15,000, is that cause of utility price increase or something?
Uh, it's the, uh, it's the shovel power adding the sewer, cause the sewer is now where it's first year been added, and they, uh, they have arbitrarily pick a number.
Okay.
To put out there, because they don't know how much water's going through there.
Thank you, sir. Scott, do you have anything to add about the airport? You got your license yet?
That'd be dangerous. But Mayor, with your permission, uh, we would like to, unless there's any more capital or general operating questions. We've got three more categories we need to touch on that should not be lengthy. And return to the tab transfers in the notebook, and it'll be listed as page 34. If there's one found, let's explain your management, that's fine.
Okay, so this is just showing, it's kind of a summary or more detail of what we looked at on general fund summary when we first started this meeting, um, yesterday. This just shows where we're transferring money from the general fund to these other funds. For instance, we're, we're sending, we're moving 4 million to the capital projects, 100,000, that's where we're sending it to the sewer system. Uh, because they're actually paying the bills for the grant, for the, uh, site development grant. And then we're transferring 500,000 to state street aid as it stands now. So this is just kinda accounting stuff of how we get money to the other funds. And of course, if y'all decide to send less or more, I'll just change it right there. The next, uh, tab, oh, I'm sorry, did y'all have a question? Okay, the next tab is contributions, these are nonprofits, um, behind this tab are the requests we received from the nonprofits. Uh, the vocational rehab center, I believe they asked for 25,750. Well, just turn to page two, 35, and then there's a page that's unnumbered right after that. Uh, and the reason that some of these are unnumbered is we started putting the notebook together, and you never really know how many pages you're gonna have till they end, so that's why that's a problem. Um, well, this is in a different order, but Community Tennessee Rehab Center, they asked for 25,750. The library, um, which I believe we might have someone here from the library, but they asked for 173,503, which is, um, an increase of, I guess, uh, 9,000 and something dollars from what they got this year. Plus, they were asking for a one-time additional request for 10,000 toward, I think, some, uh, improvements they're doing there. The library, I mean, the senior citizens asked for the same 20,000, so since we didn't know what you wanted to do in this current proposed budget is just same as last year. Um, I don't know if y'all have any questions?
No.
Of, of anybody?
Or, no, but I certainly would like to say a few words on behalf of the library. Uh, as an executive, who has been serving as the city board member, of course, you know, it's no secret that Field Press, Eagle Boulevard area is wide with, with new construction, new buildings and everything that's going on around them. It's almost like they're applying the money, because it's, uh, so busy out there. And, and, and it's wonderful work, and it's, you know, whatever Cooper's doing, everything they touch is gold, it's beautiful. But that, they're, they're, they're gonna be leaving, I mean, that's no secret, and, um, but.
I think, I'm sorry, I made the interruption there, but when you started, you said you wanted to speak on the library, but I believe your speech.
I heard that too.
There was something in your book.
She had a senior moment.
I said, the library's moving.
And you really produced the library, I think the library lady didn't know what she was doing.
Library, I think she's the library local representative. Um, but yeah, the senior citizens center, they've gone through so much in the last year or so. And it's not gonna be something that's gonna be instantly done as far as when we're locating, you know, it's a lot of things that have to be done as far as buying property and, you know, of course, that's the city property that they're at, and they've got a little corner piece, you know, the two percent looking at, but they've gone through so much in losing their transportation over the last year, which is about 18,000 dollars.
Right.
Um, since COVID, everything is just going, just down. And, um, the programs have drastically decreased, uh, as far as attendance and that type of thing, um, you know, we've just gotta revamp this whole thing. And I'm, I, I'm very surprised that they didn't ask for more, uh, this year, but I certainly would love to see more to go, um, into their funding.
I'd like to see one stay at 24 level like it was, and two, to stay at the 24 level like it was, at 149, and shovel senior citizens to go up to 25, which I hate to give increase when you lose some money. That's why I thank the sources.
Yeah, I mean, we, we can, and it's nothing, it's too brutal out there, it's nothing against the parks and rec and, um, the biggest decision that we were faced in making when it came to our soccer, uh, for the kids, for the kids, these are our seniors. And it's heartbreaking to me. You know, I, I, I appreciate the mayor appointing me to that, knowing that's an executive, uh, and I would point to meeting with those people every, whenever we have, every two or three months, whatever. But it's kind of bittersweet, because, you know, we, we shed tears sometimes at those meetings. So much is going on at that senior citizens, and so much is going around it. It's like, so I, I, we're gonna, we're gonna come out shiny, bigger and better, you know, but it's just gonna take a while. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
I think the library is doing a great job, they're revamping a lot of their programs inside, so they haven't been there in a while, should go. Uh, they've got some new things going on in there, and they're really great to do, and I really think that they need to continuously get funding well, because, I mean, you know, with technology and everything, it's like, that's costly, they're expanding, they're trying to do all programs out there. More people, they use the library.
Oh, you're gonna have to give them the 170,000?
Maybe not 173,000.
Well, the, the deal is with the libraries, that's the one where if you ever give them more, you can't ever take it away.
Yep.
It's there forever, if you ever give them a dollar raise, it's there forever. So I, and we've raised it in the last few years up to 140, but didn't we raise pretty significantly last year? You got 15, so I think the 149, especially in the condition that we're in, that that's.
Yep.
We'll negotiate with them on progress too.
Right.
Yeah, we're gonna pay them money.
Yep.
And let me say, let me, let me say to Mr. Mayor, um, thank you for, um, your support with our senior citizens, you've been talking to Tanya, as well as our city manager Collins here, you both have been very supportive, and they do recognize that, and they say thank you.
We're hoping to find a new location for our senior citizen center, something that will be, uh, better than what they have now.
Yes.
It's something that will be, uh, open door as soon as that door is closed, so that those folks will have somewhere to go to, it's more accessible. Uh, easier to get to, right now, they're kind of gonna be bottled up with all the construction around them. And we do have someone that's interested in the senior citizen property and the corner property, but we just haven't gotten, uh, all of the details of what their needs will be and those things for the future, so we can find it. I would like to bring on the Recreation and Parks Department, Cindy, I think out there does a wonderful job with our seniors. I've been out there, if you've ever, uh, seen all of the activities they have, proms and senior Olympics and all kinds of different things that they do, and so we appreciate, uh, everything we can do for our senior citizens, I am one.
I'm sorry.
They contribute, yeah.
Yes, they do, uh, I think they're at 17,000.
Okay, but we own the facilities, the city I'm talking about, so that's why we're trying to help, uh, relocate. If we find something, then we may, uh, at that point in time, try to negotiate with the county, see if they might wanna help on that too, right, Scott?
I'm sure it will.
Yeah, okay. Any other comments along that line, then Scott, Kay, if y'all need to move to the next item?
One minute.
Go ahead, Scott.
Going back to the Shelbyville Bedford County Public Library.
Uh huh.
They actually somewhat made two requests. Now, last year, Mayor and City Council did raise and make the maintenance effort up to 164,812.
Right.
But the other request, which would not be maintenance of effort, and would not be reoccurring, would actually go to help the inside facility improvements. And the reason I bring that up, council may want to consider doing a little bit there to help them with their building program. I, I just put it for thought, sir. We would not have to do it again next year, is what I'm saying. This, this is a one-time contribution in essence.
And that will not be reoccurring, so that's what you're saying, yes, Kay?
And I was just gonna say, Margaret, the director had reached out to me to ask when the meeting was, and I said I didn't know if people were gonna be, you know, presenting or talking or whatever, but I think we have a representative from the library here, if anybody had any specific questions, which I know you're on the board, but, um, I just wanted at least they should hear, so Margaret can't say I ignored her. And then she'll talk to me for my late fees out there. Oh, okay, good, good, I'll just keep the books.
They're making all kinds of changes to the inside of the library, making more things convenient for everyone and those kind of things like that.
Much of them are wanting us to contribute to that.
Folks, have y'all got something else?
I was gonna say, yeah, I'd be for the 10,000.
One time.
To give them the one-time thing, but also, when I was on the library board, I was always amazed at the number of people that actually use the library. We have a, we have a great way of keeping up with it at the rec center, but the library also had 40,000 people, 23, 24. And those numbers almost mirrored what the rec center was.
Same, Margaret showed us a good.
We talk about rec center and a lot of activities, but the library services, a lot of our citizens, a lot of those that are right here in Shelbyville, they use that. And that's just the ones that walk in through the door.
That's right.
That they're counting, not counting, all the wifi out in the parking lot, and a lot of people use it for searching for better jobs and the computer systems and those with the kids and everything, so I'll be, I'll always be for improving the funding on the library, especially if we're sitting here. especially if we're sitting here trying to negotiate with them, wanting them to give us property that they own, and we turn around and we don't give them the funding they're requesting.
I was thinking the same thing. Okay. We appreciate you being here, all the work you do at the library, thank you so much. Uh, Scott, Kay?
So, what do we do, the ten thousand?
Ten thousand.
One time.
And then, are we doing twenty-five on the senior or not? Somebody says.
Yeah, I need twenty-five on senior citizens.
And since day one, we're five. Because since y'all want us...
Have a whole different thing.
They asked for twenty-five, I just, I didn't see where the need was yet. You're the one individual who's sitting on the board, obviously, but the board didn't ask for an extra, I'm not picking up a seat too. I feel like we're gonna do a whole lot more.
Because they felt like, they, they felt like the council was gonna take out, and I think they were a little intimidated with that. Of course, that was Sonia's decision not to do it, but, and I, and I had, I given them no indication that I was going to, you know, to say anything, but, you know, I appreciate everybody to step up.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that, but I'm just saying...
Yeah, but there's a long, long ahead.
Yeah, we've got a lot more, we've had a good one.
Yeah.
Kill them real quick on vocational rehab. That's a state thing, and their funding is requiring us to match, it's only seven hundred and fifty dollars, should we not hit the state number? I mean, they lose state funding if we don't. It's only seven hundred and fifty dollar change. Yeah, it's not included in there yet.
We've, we've stayed at twenty-five for a while, but they, they did ask for twenty-five and seven fifty this year. Do you wanna go to that?
Yeah. Yeah, they're gonna lose a big chunk.
Twenty-five, seven fifty, okay.
You want the paper? No, I was just reading the paper. They did, yeah, they do the bulk of the local funding. Okay, next item, do you get an answer on that, Scott? You good? Kay? Y'all good on that one?
Yes. Let's go to special funds. And, uh, so the first one on page thirty-six is the cable TV fund. City, uh, just for a little bit of background, the city a few years back got thirty thousand dollars from Charter or somebody, uh, and they didn't spend it for several years, but then we have spent all but, you know, around fifteen thousand, I guess. We did some stuff in here, the council chambers bought some communication equipment, uh, this camera, and, uh, so that, we're just, uh, and Kay kinda helped this budget, uh, actually did the budget. We're just putting in six thousand next year in case we need things in this room. Uh, as this is depleted, we will need to start just using the general fund, because this fund will go away. This was a special purpose, one-time, thirty thousand dollars, and we've just been using it, so, uh, that's all that is. Any questions on that?
No, but I've asked before about the franchise fees that we received.
Right.
And they've jumbled into the general...
They're in the general fund, absolutely.
Uh, is it too messy to maybe separate those funds to stick some things in here when you need to?
Um...
I mean, I...
I would have, I would have a study on that. Um, this fund was set up when I got here, and it was just for that grant. Right now, the franchise fees that you're speaking of are in the general fund, helping to fund, you know, in conjunction with property tax, sales tax, it's helping fund all the departments. Uh, but it looks like cable TV franchise, which is mainly Charter, Spectrum, is about a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Uh, the AT&T is about six thousand, and it seems like there's another one, but, um, currently, you're correct, it's in the general fund. If, if y'all want me to look into that, I can, and we'll just have to realize...
Does it really matter? I mean, it's been there forever. I thought that those franchise fees were actually designated to something.
I don't think they are. I could be wrong.
They're not air bargained. They're not bargaining anything else.
Okay. Um, all right, so next page is the budget reserve fund. This fund was set up at some point in the past. Um, it typically, I think the thought, thought process was, hey, let's keep about a half a million dollars for, like, emergencies. Um, some was moved out of here, I won't call any names, uh, two or three years ago, toward a hangar, jet, a jet hangar, you could probably guess. And then we replenished it, though, last year. We replenished it last year, so now it's back up to five hundred and forty-three thousand. So this is just kind of a budget reserve, you know, that we keep for emergencies. Next page, debt reserve. This is a fund that was set up separately to pay debt, as the name indicates. Um, for some reason, and I'm sure there's a reason, uh, the amount needed for the flume payment goes to the general fund, and we pay that, and then there was money coming back in here, so it was kind of an in and out. I wasn't here when that was set up, however, um, after this next year, we're expecting to have five hundred and sixty-nine thousand still in this account, and we only have one more principal on a note due of fifty-five thousand plus interest. So we're, we're gonna have, you know, five hundred thousand in debt reserve with no debt at that point, if that makes sense. So, next page, thirty-nine, this is police equipment fund, we might should have discussed it when we were talking about police, but Jan and, uh, Pat and I went over this. Um, this is just for some police equipment, specific court ordered fines go. Uh, they don't have any specific requests, however, we typically budget some other equipment in there in case something comes up during the year, and you don't have to do an amendment. Um, I don't even think they used anything out of this last year. We budgeted twenty-five thousand this year, we haven't even spent anything, but we're budgeting twenty-five next year for come-ups. Next page, forty, is the drug fund. Uh, this is the police drug fund, um, court ordered fines and, and any forfeits, those type things going here in the revenue side. On the expenditure side is, um, the, the officer that handles the drug dog, the dog training and the officer training, if it's related to the dog, comes out of here. The dog food, drug dog expense, we're also adding drug kits, drug test kits this year. Uh, this is all funded by fines and so forth, so we're, we're looking like by the end of next year, we're gonna have about forty thousand plus in here. And that's, you have to have that separate, that fund. The next tab is state road projects. All right, um, this is where a lot of different projects are, this is not State Street Aid where paving is, this is where, like, Fairfield Pike, the river overlook, um, the traffic signal improvements, the Madison Street sidewalks, the Deary Street sidewalk, the land right-of-way purchases for Fairfield Pike. You'll notice in the revenues, that's where we get the grants in, or the transfers from general fund, whichever it may be. The expenditure side is where we pay for those. Some of those, some of these, it's hard to know really what to budget, because you don't know how far along the project's gonna get, so on some, I just went ahead and put the whole amount of the revenue, the whole amount of expenditure, so the net is our max, so we're covered, whether we do it all this year or not. If it doesn't all get done next year, we'll just roll it to next year. Um, and of course, we don't know how much right-of-ways will cost. Um, the engineer is estimating it, um, at a million, I think, for the whole right-of-way process. Uh, and, and that should be eighty, twenty, uh, should be twenty for, twenty percent for the city. Uh, we are gonna have to move some construction funds to right-of-way phase funds, we'll have to ask the T-Dot to do that, but we, we haven't done that yet. And then also, the engineer's gonna need an amendment going forward to cover their other services through construction, but a lot of these projects have a lot of steps to them, so that's what this fund is. And, and, and we have put some extra money in here over the last two or three years, not this year, because we were tight, but if you'll notice in twenty-three, twenty-four, we moved a billion from general fund here, and twenty-four, twenty-five, we moved seven hundred and fifty thousand. So that's why the yellow number at the bottom, we have about a billion five sitting there for what we, we could use toward Fairfield or toward the overlook or toward this or toward that. So that's kind of sitting there, you know, we could move it back to general and it'll make general look bigger, but I kind of wanted to go ahead and get it over there to be sitting where it's gonna be used, but we can have it wherever y'all want it. Does anybody have any questions on that? Industrial development, uh, I'm happy to announce that this account will soon be closing. And what I mean by that is, this is the two thirty-one board that hasn't met in a year. Um, we were kind of waiting to make sure we got no more bills, you know, for a while we had some, uh, attorney fees and so forth as we're trying to wind down all the, the stuff the ducks on and this and that. Uh, that account has approximately eighty-nine thousand in it. I think approximately eighty-five of that, I've gotta get the final numbers, because the city and the county were splitting the expenses, and the city and the county were expens- uh, splitting the interest. And e- every month, we've been getting three hundred and something dollars interest. But anyway, I've gotta get all that out, and my goal is by the end of May, have the final numbers, and, and then quickly shoot the money out to the city and the county, and I think we'll get about eighty-five of it, because back, what, two, three years ago, we put in a hundred thousand to kind of keep it cash flow, so that's why the majority is coming back to us. So, you know, hopefully that account will be closed by the end of May, if not by the end of June. Because that portion of the industrial development's over. I don't mean industrial development's over, but that specific, uh, project. Page forty-three, State Street Aid. So, um, state gas taxes going here in bank interest, um, last year, we transferred five hundred thousand from general fund to here, so about to do more paving. Um, if you flip onto page, the page after forty-three, I wanna make, you know, we tried to show you everybody's request, so I, I, I named that Buck's request, and now his request wasn't for the street lighting, but he did ask for paving and maintenance of one point five million, requested street marking and lining of eighty thousand and solid expense of thirty. So that is what he requested, because we want everybody to know what everybody requested. Um, after Scott met with him, and I was in there too, but after they talked, um, we went down, because the fund kind of needs to have a fifteen percent fund balance, if it doesn't have a fifteen percent, the state comptroller wants you to do a cash flow every month, because they're afraid you're gonna run out of money. So, after doing the numbers, and, you know, we're limited by gas tax, we don't have enough gas tax by itself to do as much paving as we need to do. So, since I've, I don't know what's happened, you know, the last thirty years or whatever, but this current year is the first time I've seen us move money from general to State Street Aid to help with paving. And, and we're, go ahead.
No, 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 you finish your comment, I just hadn't had...
Yeah. Well, I mean, I, and, and then, so this year, we were, currently, there's five hundred more thousand to go to paving, and instead of the one point five, which I believe Buck requested, currently, it sits at one point one, but we can add more, we can do whatever y'all want to. Um, and to get more, you would need to move more from general fund to over there, because you can't just create more gas tax, you know.
You can.
Hey, do you?
The bill that Senator Reeves, uh, the lieutenant senator, this is part of the state shared taxes, it's gonna be based on our census numbers as projected to save part of the economic and community development. So, we're gonna pick up about three thousand, uh, in population, I projected, and then they give us a multiplier on what that'll increase out to. So it, it can be, you know, a few thousand or a few tens of thousands of dollars overall. State's three to eight is one of the state share taxes that we will see an increase on.
So we'll, we'll know more about that, what, January, February?
January first.
Okay. But anyway, currently, there's one point one million in there for, um, paving, fifty thousand for street lining, marking, and, um, and this does allow...
Four hundred thousand for installation, paving, right.
It, well, it's the same as, this year, we had one point one million, and, and next year, it's showing one point one million. I, I, I went back to page forty-three, I'm sorry.
The request Scott was talking about.
The request, yes. Yes.
Used all of it, did he, Buck?
Yes, sir.
It makes me nervous, I have to scare him off, using the last two or three thousand.
We increased it five hundred thousand last year, that happened, didn't it?
Yes.
And then there's four hundred thousand, okay.
Yeah, we're getting closer to what that, that study that we had done, we're getting closer to what they said that we shouldn't be spending.
Didn't you say, like, one point two would be the status quo, one point eight or one point?
Yeah, one point two was three years ago, would stay status quo, um, one point five would start getting us ahead, so that was three years ago, so I'm sure all those numbers have shifted accordingly.
Just so I understand, so, so that's what Buck requested, but what's actually in the budget is the same as what he got last year? Yes, except there's ten more thousand in street marking, and there's, uh, about fifteen thousand more in his original solid budget, although we amended it to thirty-five. And that gets us at the fifteen percent or more fund balance. But if, whatever y'all wanna do, or you wanting to add more, or you wanting to, or you wanting to keep it like it is, or what do you wanna do?
So those funds that Scott was mentioning just a few minutes ago, do we wait around to see if we're gonna get any of that, or do you...
Well, we'll know more then. We could always do a budget amendment and increase it, if, if we, typically on these gas taxes, once, they stay pretty consistent each month. Um, I just wouldn't know how to predict, I wouldn't know how to predict it, you know, sitting here today, how much it's gonna be.
But we could put more to paving if it weren't until the beginning of the year.
I would think so, yes. When we see what we all see.
And, and again, it's population-based, so when we, I think, census has this around between two thousand, if we jump up twenty-five, they'll give us a formula that multiplies three or four extra thousand people, we get, equals, and we're getting dependent to dollar amount, if it has to provide that, so this is long, tense, A U C D.
So whatever y'all wanna do on that? You want to...
Like you said.
Keep it one point more like this right now, and then just see what happens, okay?
The hotel motel fund is, is pretty much a so fund based on the hotel motel tax and short-term, uh, revenue, we extend, uh, economic development, expenditures, we have ten thousand in there.
Is it? Yeah, it is.
This ten thousand was a placeholder, depending on what direction council chooses to go to. Uh, we know retail lines will provide us information for seven five hundred, retail strategies, information for twenty-five thousand, and then other companies that actively present, which we'll put out the R and Q for as approved by council. So this is just a placeholder until we see what we're dealing with in this.
On the, uh, economic development, um, can you count any part of your salary or the, any of the folks that are working on the economic development team, uh, from this fund right here? Can you take any of that and shift it? You know what I'm talking about? Since we don't have an economic development director as such...
We'd have, I mean, he would have to start writing his time down every time he does something, economic development, because we'd need backup for it, I would think.
You see where I'm coming from, though? We're spending that, we're spending that time with our employees, so, uh, just wanna make sure it's documented somewhere.
Yeah. He would have to be very detailed about a time, and so we would have to, I don't know if you could, I'm sorry, I don't know how, I mean, because it's been different every month, so I'm not sure how we would project that.
It would be a little bit complicated, because if you truly started counting salary, payroll would have to be over there, and you would have to have matching social security and...
But we're doing, we're doing that work all the time.
Yeah.
With the group and the team.
And I could just bill them in quarterly or something. We'll bill...
We'll bill the hotel, okay.
Okay, thank you.
And then under terrorism, uh we have five thousand for subscriptions built. That's like Black History Heritage and other organizations that we partner with. Uh twenty-five thousand for advertising, eighty thousand for signs and banners. And the least that number has taken a bigger job. We do have proposals that I shared with you all last week about the new monument signs of magnificence. Council has to approve it before we go in public, if you suggest it to a proposal. Local bidding grants, that's when we give a little here and there to various qualifying uh nonprofit organizations and celebration. Special events has just grown since last year to help us continue to improve not only the Christmas experience, but perhaps other tourism-related things, maybe the Riverview District. And at this point, we don't have anything for the Riverview District. We are working to move forward with some of the, as our public works director calls it, some of the pre that will attract people, you know, the flourage, the signage and stuff like that. And moving on, uh.
Real quick, Scott, on that, let's go back to Riverview District. There's not a dime in this budget right now that we're already talking about a deficit in for Riverview District, and we can't stop, I mean, we got a hole in the ground there. Where are we pulling money from to finish that project?
Well, if if you'll see, you've got the fund balance. Now, this is a separate account, please erase general fund from your mind. Right now, uh we're gonna end fiscal year with four hundred thirteen thousand dollars.
Yes, sir, but we're gonna have.
It's page forty-five.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but we've got significantly more work than that left to give Riverview District. Before I finish that work.
Now that I have a skitster, it might be.
Well, that is.
Okay, and and councilman, I appreciate and and understand your point, and it's very valid. But all jokes aside, Public Works is doing so much, you know, much work on our behalf, and it's saving money, money, money. So they're doing it part as a routine street work that they do, and it's healthy. But now, we may be coming back next month and saying, well, we need X amount for the sign, we need X amount for decorative painting and stuff that Public Works had not did.
Yeah, and there is an opportunity to grant that Lori Fisher. That could, that could cover the signage and stuff, so.
Yes, sir. We're just buying out the sense that's made to you and by that the destination list that we already set. And the Chamber of Commerce, ten thousand dollars, that is where we contribute ten thousand dollars last year to the Bedford County Christmas program that I think everyone enjoys.
Why don't you have that somewhere else? Place a little.
Now, we've got special events, but that was separate. Special events is what paid for the preparations around City Hall and Bed Christmas.
Wow. It's a big success. While while we're kind of on the Riverview, Riverview District and that kind of thing, on the revenue side of things, I mentioned this this year before, uh I get to travel a lot in in Nashville, Chattanooga, other communities in Tennessee that are near us, they are charging things like a liquor tax, a destination tax. They've got all kinds of these little sales tax numbers on top of your restaurant bill, bar tab. I mean, you've got ten percent sales tax, but it's quite common for the rest of those, the other taxes they've added on is adding up to almost another ten percent. So you're paying like twenty percent on a lot of these uh liquor taxes uh when you go into these bars and things. If we're gonna make this, it's an entertainment district up here, I would say we we need to investigate what these other cities are doing so that we, that could be a substantial revenue stream. And like the hotel motel tax fund, could be a dedicated fund to help that district improve itself.
Very good.
That's a little profit center.
Very good.
Is that it?
Didn't we talk about the raises in general, still coming in here next time and not? The change in last year was sent in to around change it, so let's make this preliminary.
The, what you commented before we raised it.
Always use the rest of it?
Thank you. Tell me the bonus.
Good.
Shield the sheep.
Very basic.
Okay, so.
Yeah, that's right.
Keep in mind, for all of these across-the-board raises, the twenty-four percent that we have right now on the fund balance that we must maintain, it will absorb any of these numbers and keep us above the twenty percent as mandated.
So it'll come out of the fund balance, is what you're saying.
But if you keep us above the number that it wants to save up.
Yes.
What I'm saying.
All right, huh? You'll start, I'll start, close, I'll start.
Hit it.
Got all the party heads here, I'm gonna make them mad right out of the gate. I go to church with police officers, I go to church with firemen. Every time we talk, how much raise you gonna be, how much raise you gonna be? I got caught in the same thing when I worked for the state. I worked under a coordinator. He made good money. I didn't make what he made. State raise is four percent across the board. Four percent of a hundred fifty thousand dollars, we're doing good raises. Four percent of sixty thousand dollars, that's all I got. And it just keeps getting further and further away. I'm afraid we're getting that way in the city show. And that ain't right. These people, like the salary people, and these guys out here working, ladies working by the hour out here, they're getting left behind. And they definitely, I mean, they asked about it, they don't wanna make more money, I bought four. But giving a straight raise ain't gonna catch them up. In no way, shape, form, it just gonna get wider and wider. Why can't we, why shouldn't times get big? Why the, why can't we have a two-tier, have things where the salary people, let's just say we we we're gonna get five percent this year. We're gonna give, we'll give the people out here salary, what become, our employees, maybe that's the word, they'll get five percent. These people right here will get thirty, and that's gonna bring them a little backup. We gotta get the people out here working, on the ground, working. We gotta get them closer, because all they do is get further apart. And that's not right, we can't do that. I've talked to other councilmen, him is probably here, it's been, I talked about before, we gotta do something to to close this march. And the only way we can do it is in the races. So I'm, I, my proposal is, I don't have any, I'm giving them, they get racist issue, but it can't be across the board.
So you're saying have exempt and then non-exempt?
Yeah.
Exempt or the salary, non-exempt or the hourly.
Yeah, yep, yep, yep.
I would just ask that we talk about, I mean, you all adopted, I don't know how many years ago it is, but tried to adopt that salary structure. That was, that was a part of what you were trying to.
Okay, yeah.
You had a plan that you were gonna try to, I mean, actually come in line for each, each individual job.
Bring them up.
Where do they, where do they fall in amongst the state? What's the average salary, where you are, and that's what you were trying to, I I can't. We talked about it every year at budget, I'm not exactly sure where we stand on how much we have, how well we follow it. I know my directors probably could stand up and give us a.
Well, the city of Hendersonville, it was on news, they're losing police officers before they can ever get them in their uniforms, they were losing. City manager, city, but Hendersonville, they gave the people, the officers out there on the ground a raise. They didn't give these people up here, they gave these guys out here walking streets a raise. They can do it, why can't we do it? And I'm talking firemen, I'm talking about everybody, it's not just. Have it two-tier, management's here and people out here, give these people five, give these people a three. Bring it closer together.
And some departments have built-in steps, some departments don't.
Yeah, yeah. I think we did that, when we first adopted, when we first adopted that plan.
Well, you brought this up two or three years ago.
Yeah.
And we. Because part of it was trying to get some, some people did, I think, got extra money.
Yeah, I think I used a salary. I was talking to you, sound like a fifty, fifty thousand above, making ten percent and below, making four.
But why do we need to punish the people that actually have trained and supervised their departments and have gone, I'm not saying that the worker person is not as important as the supervisor, but why should you punish one and not the other when the cost of living raises are all across the board for everybody?
That's true.
And and also.
But you, but you lose people. You lose, but person with, the young couple starting out with two or three kids are in a lot worse than people who've been working here a number of years, making eighty or ninety thousand dollars a year, a hundred.
I get it, but they put in their time, but they put in their time to give it that eighty or ninety thousand.
That's the other side of the coin.
You know, I mean, that's, that's the salary reason we didn't do it before, that's exactly the reason it hadn't been.
Your salary step, that was the whole purpose of that, is really to try to get people in those um positions. That was part of it, I think we were supposed to do two steps. I know my people in the back row.
Some of the big.
Now, I forgive the racist, but we should, if we can, remember that this year, we have spent more money than we brought in, and we're in our deficit and.
I get it, but across the board, we got.
Because how long are we gonna do this?
Also.
We don't punish it, then, we can punish it. The, the management's gonna get a raise. He's making a hundred thousand dollars, man, that's a good raise for him, shit, that poor cat done out.
He's on twenty-four seven, seven days a week, and that's his responsibility. The directors are on twenty-four.
The officers and the firemen people are.
No, they've got their shifts, they go home. The directors are on twenty-four seven, seven days a week.
No.
But they are, I read in that. They are.
Rested in the last one, zero. And I'm not taking on Jan, but I'm just telling.
I'm saying, but he's responsible for the whole police department, just like Matt's responsible for the whole fire.
You know, you're not punishing.
God, yes, he's such a youngster.
We could just review the uh viewpoints, get numbers, perhaps on both uh councilman's recommendation and we have the numbers for your recommendation. It's been a long day.
We appreciate both sides, and we understand both sides, and and I I'm, that's something to think about. Scott, if y'all would work on that, see if you can put something together in numbers and let us know exactly what you've got. Is that agreeable to everybody on the city council?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, what else have you got?
Mayor, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
I just wanna say, whatever y'all do, we understand. But I I speak for myself, but I think I speak for our parents, as alluding to pay study, okay? Get hung up on titles, we get hung up on all different kinds of things. Um but the comprehensive study that was done before, that's now involved now, I understand uh that. But what it did was take surrounding communities that were like, some a little bigger, some the same size, some a little smaller. It took responsibilities, right, for no matter the title, what what those, what those responsibilities were, and then calculated the market share, the fair market value for that labor, no matter if it was a firefighter or a shooter, right? And then it said, okay, this area, you know, this mid-level management, they need to move at this point, the bottom guy needs to move at this point, the top guy, and they said, and then you get all that to a starting point. And then from there on, you know, they had a step raise or a cost of living built in. So it takes away, alleviates compression, and then like you said, like you were talking about council turnover, like, you know, there's a gap, but you know, when you, and I think the way we've always done it is across the board, raise keeps the gap the same. But to ever make the gap more, I guess you say, palatable, and and when we do those studies, or if y'all will please consider doing those studies next time, let's take the recommendation and fix it. And then you got where you could go across the board from there. And that was done, it it was implemented kinda one year, and then it was taken right back away. And that's because we had, you know, some changes in politics. So if if y'all could please do that, it would be much easier on us as department heads, who, everyone in here wants the best for our youngest people. Like you said, we are the most vulnerable, we all know it's really hard starting out. Now, that doesn't mean that my bills are less or Buck's or nobody else's is. But if y'all could fix it one time, stick to it so it becomes common practice, then it doesn't change in a year or two years, and that's just the way we do business, and then it's, hey, it's a whole or none. So I would ask on behalf of everyone here to please consider fixing it like you want to. Thank you.
Scott, okay?
Appreciate it.
Y'all, y'all make sure that you include that. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Anyone else? That's John.